This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
So I'm calling the Finance Committee meeting of July 14, 2020, to order at 1:40 PM. And the meeting is being held electronically by remote participation pursuant to the Governor's Order that allows meetings to be held during this period of time because of the state of emergency with joint participation. It's an exception to the standard open meeting law. I am, because we're meeting by joint participation, I'm going to ask each member of the Finance Committee To indicate that they have heard me and can, and we can confirm that they can be heard when they say "present." At that point, I am going to ask President Heskey to call the Council to order because there's also A quorum of Council members and she will have to confirm for the Council members that they can also be heard. So have done that statement to begin with. Kathy Shane?
Yes, I'm here and can hear you.
Bob Hegner?
I'm here.
Lynn Grusmer?
Here.
Pat Angeles?
Here.
Ruthie Pam?
Present.
Mary Lou Tomlin?
Here.
And Sharon Povinelli?
Here.
I think that I have all of the members of the Finance Committee that have confirmed that they Can participate fully in the meeting, so the meeting is called order and Lynn, would you like to call the Council to order?
Seeing as we have a quorum of the Council at the Finance Committee meeting on July 14, I'm calling the Council to order at 1:42. I would like to check with the additional Council members that they can hear me and we can hear them. George Ryan?
I'm present.
Manny Joe Haneky?
Present.
Garcia Demont?
Yes.
I believe that was it. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna, for a moment, put the agenda on the screen if I'm able to do so and Fortunately, I'm running into problems, so I'm gonna go back and not try and share and if Lynn's able to do so, she will put it on the screen briefly. But there are several segments to the meeting. We have presentations from several departments about their budgets. We are going to start with the, if you look at, thank you Lynn, if you look at the Agenda Item 3, Fiscal 21 Budget Other Matters as Determined. We decided that we would ask the Police Chief to come back because we had provided several questions for the budget For the Police Chief and we want to get to them. Then we have presentations on the general budget and that sections of the budget which we need to consider In order to complete our budget review process. After that, those presentations, we will open it up for a period of public comment Of allowing public to comment from one to three minutes of time. The number of minutes will depend upon the amount of time. And then we will also want to talk about just the budget review and recommendation process that is underway. So it is the agenda that you see before you, but it is not, not in order. But since it's all been posted, I think that's appropriate. And that's how we are going to proceed with the meeting. So Lynn, I think we can go back from, to a regular view of the moment. And I thank you Chief Livingstone for being at the meeting today. And I see that you have at least one other, two other officers, two of the captains who are with us also To answer questions that come from the Committee and the Council. But I wanted to first start by, if you have anything that you can comment on the three questions that we had sent to you About mostly staffing and patrolling issues.
Sure, so thanks, Mr. Steinberg, and thanks to the Finance Committee for having us back. And again, I don't know what timeframe you wanted us to withhold or hold to, Andy. So if we're going a little long-winded, don't be afraid to interject or tell us to move along. But we'll try to stick to those three specific questions that you had originally sent to me. One regarding staffing and what our staffing gets broken down and who, how it looks on day-to-day operations. Captain Young talked a little bit about the organizations that we partner with, those consist of, and then I'll follow up with vacancies and what our expectations are throughout the FY21 process Pertains to manpower and maybe some other little things there. And if you have questions, that'd be great. So I'll turn it over to Captain Ting and he can talk about some staffing issues. Gabe?
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to talk a little bit about basically our operations and the structure of the Amherst Police Department Relative to staffing. You know, there's a lot of misconceptions in terms of, you know, what our roles are for the different police departments That we have within the town of Amherst, and I just want to explain some of those roles. So the jurisdictional boundaries for the different police agencies in Amherst and the differences. So for the Amherst Police, our jurisdictional boundaries include all public ways. And private ways are open invitees within the town of Amherst. The University of Massachusetts is, their police department's a state entity. So any state property belonging to UMass Amherst or neighboring towns would fall within their authority. It also extends to contiguous streets that cross through the campus such as North Pleasant Street. The Amherst College Police Department is a private entity. So any property in Amherst that's privately owned by Amherst College would be patrolled by them. And Hampshire College no longer has a sworn police force. They are now patrolled by a security team that only patrols Hampshire College property. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of what the difference is between each of the police departments. The Amherst Police has 48 budgeted sworn officers. All Amherst Police officers must attend a full-time municipal police academy Or equivalent consisting of the current platform of 26 weeks of instruction. And funding for that agency comes from the town of Amherst. University Police Department, they have 62 budgeted sworn police officers. And all UMass officers must attend also a full-time municipal level police academy Or equivalent consisting of the current platform of 26 weeks. Funding for that agency comes from the state. The difference there is they cannot enforce Amherst Town bylaws and they don't patrol, they do not patrol Town streets and properties. The Amherst College Police Department, they have 13 budgeted sworn officers. So all Amherst College Police officers must attend a 14-week special state police academy or campus academy. So this academy would not meet the acceptable requirements for a municipal police department. They do not possess Chapter 90 authority, which means they don't have the authority to pull cars over And issue Massachusetts civil motor vehicle citations. So any major felony such as sexual assaults or death investigations or anything, Any major incidents are investigated by the Amherst Police Department. So that's an agreement that we have with their agency. They just don't have the resources for it. And they also cannot enforce Amherst Town bylaws. Hampshire College, again, they don't have a police department. So anything of any significance is falls upon our responsibility to handle. So we do go there when we're called, but we don't actively patrol their campus. So our current staffing levels, again, 48 full-time sworn police officers. We currently have one vacancy, so we just had three recruit officers that just graduated on Friday. Their first day was yesterday. So they are now in their field training process, which consists of three months of field training And one year of probationary status. So the current staffing for us is we have one Chief of Police, two captains, one administrative, one operational, Four lieutenants, three of them are patrol lieutenants, and one is a detective lieutenant. And we currently have seven sergeants, seven of them are on patrol. When I say patrol, I mean uniformed division, and one detective sergeant. In terms of patrol officers, we have 28 patrol officers and five detectives. Normally, we have six, but one was just promoted and moved to the patrol ranks. And we also have two K9s. So just to give you a description of what our shifts look like, we have three traditional shifts, Which is 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM to midnight, and midnight to 8:00. And usually when we have additional staffing, sometimes we have a swing shift, which is 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM. Our minimum essential personnel on the streets essentially is one sergeant and three patrol officers And one station officer. So you have a total of five officers in total. The University Police Department, for example, they have one supervisor, three patrol officers, also one station officer. Amherst College Police, on a regular basis, they only have one supervisor and one patrol officer for their campus. So we have a system in place that's called no time off weekends. And that's specifically catered towards the academic months for the university. So during the academic months or certain weekends that we determine to be, we call them NTOs. So a regular NTO weekend begins on Thursday from 4:00 PM and ends on Sunday at 8:00 AM. So our NTOs are regulated through collective bargaining agreements between the town And the patrolman supervisors' unions. And what that is, is we've had that for the past 25 years or so. Certainly been there ever since I've been here. And over those years, the academic months sprinkled with holidays and long weekends Have produced high level of activity trends that we're able to forecast and gauge. The activity from these past weekends were examined by analyzing past statistics, Event plans, weather forecasts, and after-action reports. So these no-time-off weekends are measured to ensure that our staffing levels are acceptable To handle all of those activities. So during NTOs, the department will not honor any vacation requests. We don't honor any compensatory time or personal time off. However, if there's a hardship and time off is absolutely necessary, approval is decided by the Chief of Police. Sick and family sick is certainly allowed. During NTOs, all scheduled shifts are mandatory. And any open shifts due to sick or family sick or authorized time off will be filled in order to have a full staff. So, you know, we utilize NTOs to make sure that we have enough staffing every single weekend. And our weekends are certainly really busy during the academic year. Events that we consistently plan for in the fall are student move-in. Certainly those first two weeks are extremely busy with college kids not having many classes to go to Or, or that many obligations. So it's kind of like Party Central for the first two weeks, so it's really busy. And that follows us into the Halloween weekend. During the fall, so we have UMass tailgating and football games and homecoming weekends And town common events and events from the Amherst High School. And certainly when there's large celebratory gatherings, whenever there's a championship From one of our major sports, there is usually some kind of event at the university that we have to assist with. In the springtime, some of the big events that we planned for are the Blarney Blowout, The UMass Spring Concert Weekend, UMass and Amherst College graduations, student move-out, Town common events, and again, Amherst High School events. So our staffing level during NTOs, you know, I mentioned what we have for minimums, But usually during NTOs, we will have probably about six to eight officers at a maximum. So usually we have one supervisor and one OIC, and OIC is an officer in charge. And that's the rank of a lieutenant for each shift. And generally, again, between six to eight patrol officers that we make sure are filled during our NTOs. However, the weekends when it's not, during the academic months, we just maintain our minimum shift. So just to explain, what we have is discretionary holdovers. So even with our best efforts to try and estimate activity, it's oftentimes very unpredictable On a weekend and weekly basis. So additionally, when there are major incidents that occur, Usually each call will consist of at least two officer, a two officer response. So when we're at our minimum, if there's two major incidents that are happening at one time, You know, our whole shift depleted really quickly. So a lot of times we'll have to call in backup resources or ask for our mutual aid partners to help out. So common reasons for those holdovers are busy weekend nights, major incidents such as homicides, Unattended deaths, assaults, disturbances, large motor vehicle crashes and house fires, Or again, multiple incidents in the same time period. Any calls with safety concerns always require two officer response. And of course, with any major incident, you know, we will require a Detective Bureau response, Potentially an administrative staff response or responses from outside agencies Such as the District Attorney's Office or the State Police. So there is another question in terms of what type of organizations that, that we commonly work with. So the, the most common agency that we work with is the Amherst Fire Department. Since the police department has shifts of officers who are considered as first responders, We're already out there patrolling the streets. So it only makes sense that we get dispatch any medical or fire calls along with the Amherst Fire Department. So we are often the first to arrive on scene to assess the situation, report the findings and request resources. And after determining which agency should be the primary lead depending on the nature of the call, Either the Amherst Fire Department or the Amherst Police Department will then move to their trained roles Given the circumstances. Other agencies that we work with regularly are-
Hey Gabe, can I interject and let Ronnie jump in on the specifics, the clinical support in those agencies?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You want to mention that, or do you want me to continue over that?
Is Ron still on?
Can you hear me, Ron? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, great. I'm sorry about that. I'm having some technical difficulties on my end. Thank you, Gabe, very much for that. I know there were some questions, follow-up questions about some of the various organizations that we work with. We do work with a lot of different municipal organizations, state-level organizations, court-level organizations. But I, I strike from reading the email that the chief had sent me That we wanted to concentrate more on some of the service-oriented type things. So I'll touch on those and I can always expand further if we need to. As Gabe had just said, that we obviously work with our brothers and sisters up at the Fire Department. And we do respond to a lot of, a lot of calls for service with them. And it is really not so much to do their job, but really to be the eyes and ears And maybe assess it very quickly to determine if there's a dangerous situation there, To determine what type of resources we might need. We can give some notification back to the commanding officers back at the Fire Department And let them know what we're seeing so they can assess and determine what their response level is going to be. Whether it be a traffic accident, structured fire, medical emergency, something of that nature. As it relates to a mental health response, there were some questions the other day Or the other day evening about exactly how our relationship with CSO works. So I just would cover that briefly again. We employ the CIT model here, which is, which is based on the, on the Memphis model. There are very, there's various forms of a CIT that are employed by various, you know, Different police departments across the country. We being a smaller agency, the Memphis model seems to work for us. The way that works is we train 100% of our people here on mental health first aid. There's a requirement by the Department of Mental Health to do that. And then subsequent to that, we train all of our supervisors and about 25% of our staff On the CIT and, or the, what BHN or Behavioral Health Network has identified as a 40-hour training session. Again, I, there was a lot of, a lot of discussion that was made the other night About my statement that we don't try to be clinicians, and that in fact is the truth. We are, we're not clinicians and that's not what our response is about. Our response really is, is about crisis stabilization. We respond for family support reasons to determine whether or not there's some type of safety issues that are there. And really just work towards crisis stabilization till we can get some assistance. We work very closely with CSO, Clinical Support Options, which is in Northampton, based in Northampton, Which they in turn have a working relationship with the Department of Mental Health. Of course, the Hamden County version of that is Behavioral Health Network. And again, the two of them work hand-in-hand. And in fact, our T-TAC is based at BHN and that's where we, we get all of our training from And get our officers trained up in current. We've also trained our dispatchers up for call response. And that call response looks a lot different and our call-taking responsibilities look a lot different Than they did even a couple of years ago. When a CIT officer's response, it makes the calls a lot more complex than they used to be. Our departmental directive and our orders here are directed to our sergeants To allow the CIT officers to remain on the scene for a protracted period of time if necessary. Again, we're, we're not looking at solving the problem. We're just looking at harm reduction and stabilizing that person till we get somebody of a higher level of training That can come and assist them. Another thing that I wanted to note about CIT and our response that I probably did not cover the other night Was the reasons why we respond to calls like that. Really, we could carve it down to about three different reasons why we respond to, Whether it be a mental health or mental illness response Or somebody who may be suffering from some type of, some type of medical problems relates to overdosing. We either respond because there's an underlying crime that's been reported to the police department, But more frequently, we respond because of self-reporting. Either some, that the person calls and is looking for assistance or a family member calls. So typically, when we respond down to a call like that, we really don't know what we're going into. Or the other side of that, it's a call that we've been to more frequently And the officer is recognized or perhaps the patient would ask for a specific officer Because they've developed some type of, some type of rapport with them over the years Or months or weeks or whatnot. Coupled with that, we, we deal with, we deal with the Hampshire Hope in Northampton. They are the ones who have assisted us in outlining what our DAR program is, our Drug Addiction Response Team. Again, that is a harm reduction model. We are not responding to those calls for service to try and solve people's problems. We're really there to try and make certain that people get to where they need to be, Whether it need to be a hospital, to a recovery coach, to some other type of service that might be available to them. We do, you will note that, and I know the captain had talked about it earlier, about some of our calls for service. You're going to note that we do a lot of selfish initiated calls in these areas. We do follow up. It's part of our, it's part of our protocol. It's part of the model that we follow. It's part of what our training entails. And it's part of what DMH and Hampshire Hope have required from us as part of our grant funding. So typically, what we'll do is we'll contact somebody who has been, who's been in contact with us in the past To find out if there are other resources that we can put them in touch with. Are there other support options that are available for us? Are there other safety protocols? Lots of times, there's some things that are tied in with these calls that go beyond Just what maybe what their behavioral health or the mental health or the substance disorders Have first indicated there might be some safety concerns. Sometimes there's some financial issues. Sometimes they need to clear up warrants, things along those lines. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on as it relates to both, both, both these types of calls. The program that we belong to is titled the Jail Diversion Program. The JDP was designed so that we don't arrest people for some of these underlying minor crimes. Or if we're able to divert these crimes to get people to where they need to be short of arresting them, that's what we do. I don't have specific numbers here where I could provide those. Of calls, if we looked at going back some eight, nine years ago, to calls that we typically respond to, Low-level calls like disturbances and things of that nature, Where the person may have been charged with a crime or arrested and taken to the House of Corrections, They're now taken to the ED, they're taken to CSO, they're brought to detox. They're hooked up with somebody that could possibly help them, even if they're not in crisis, But get some things in order so that they possibly could be in a better spot the following day. And I see that as a win from our agency. Clinically, we also deal with the courts. We deal with ServiceNet, we deal with Safe Passages. On the domestic violence level, we deal with the Center for Women and Children. There are rape crisis center here in town. We have partnered with them for the last number of years. As the chief had mentioned the other night during our presentation, We actually have a, a person who's in bed here in our, in our agency. This civilian advocate is housed here in our, in our department. She is highly trained, very well-educated and is a private and not a public entity. In other words, the things that she deals with are, in terms of sharing information, is very limited. She is here and it's very clear that she is here for the persons who are victim and survivors Of both sexual and domestic violence. She assists those people in being hooked up with various different organizations Like Nelquit, Victim Witness Advocacy, Office of Elder Affairs, Safe Passages, ServiceNet, et cetera, et cetera, To try to, again, we're looking at harm reduction, we're looking at stabilization of the family unit, We're looking at trying to prevent difficult situations down the road, and we're looking at safety planning. She is, she's an integral part of who we are as an agency and a lot of that is grant-funded. It comes out of a program that we've partnered with the Department of Justice for the last couple of years And we are just, we are currently waiting to see whether or not that grant will be refunded in the future. Back to you, Gabe. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Actually, I'd like to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Oh, please.
Andy, would it make sense for Julie to weigh in now from the different perspective on this? Because Ron had brought up that topic and it was a concern of the Council about the inter-agency interaction.
Julie, do you have anything that you want to offer?
You're muted, Julie.
Yes, thank you for asking me. I have several things I want to talk about, but I'll talk specifically about some of the things Ron was just talking about.
Julie, just to introduce, we need to introduce you to any members of the public who are watching Who don't know who you are. Julie Fetterman is the Director of the Public Health Department in town. So thank you, Julie. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you, Andy. And Paul, should I talk about various things I was going to speak about or just this issue?
Paul? Up to you.
Okay.
Yeah. But time is short, so we need to be brief on this, I think.
Okay, so I'm going to jump in here and try and be short. But one of the things, so first of all, just talk about what, some of the things that, that Ron was talking about. So I have worked for the town since 1995 as public health nurse, then Assistant Director, And the Director for the past 10 years. And so one of the things I've had the privilege of doing is working with our police department. Because one of the things that we've tried to do for a very long time out of the Health Department Is the concept of bringing health into all matters of the town. And so the Police Department, along with other departments, were great about really embracing that concept. So about in 2014, I think it was, Amherst and four other towns Joined together to get grant funding to help create a coalition to address the opioid epidemic, Which became the Hope Coalition. I initially served on that executive committee and then it seemed to make a lot more sense To have someone from the Police Department. And so they stepped up to the plate and from almost the beginning have been deeply embedded into the Hope Coalition. So when Ron is talking about the DAR team that was created And the efforts of the Police Department over overdoses, I kind of wanted to flesh that out for you. So you've got someone who ODs and police officers have been trained how to administer Narcan In case they're first on the scene, right? Because a lot of times, police are first on the scene. They don't, as they're, as Ron's saying, we don't know what's going to happen, so maybe an ambulance hasn't been called. So they have the capability of administering Narcan, which prevents a death. So they have the capability of administering Narcan, which prevents a death. They then have developed a team, officers who will go back the next day or whatever is appropriate to where that person lives and check on that person. It's a warm knock, how you doing? Because we all know that when you get someone has just been given Narcan and is waking up, it's not really the time to talk about, hey, what's the next step in reducing perhaps your the the concept of having the next overdose? So I just really applaud the fact that our Police Department really stepped up to want to be part of this. It was a new role for police departments, and I think it's a perfect example of what our Police Department is willing to do. I'll talk about another way in which we collaborate, and that's with our Homeless Systems Meeting. So again, we've had Craig's Doors in our town now for, I want to say, nine years. They run a shelter. We also have other entities in town who serve our homeless population as outreach workers. And we decided that it it made sense to bring folks together, to kind of convene stakeholders, people who work with homeless folks, and then town officials to meet once a month and talk about what's coming up in the community, what's coming up at the shelter among our homeless folks, and the police have really been integral in that. Again, Captain Ting has been part of that, and before him, Jen Gunderson. They're at the table, the communication is happening, it's going back and forth from those serving the homeless to the police and from the police back to them. I've just been so impressed in the ways we've been able to work together like that. Since this may be my only other opportunity to speak, one of the reasons I really wanted to speak was because public health and public safety are crucial during this pandemic. I really urge you to respond to issues that are being brought up as opposed to react. We need our Police Department. I also want you to know that I am passionate about injustice and its impact on people's health. Our Amherst Health Department has had a long history of understanding and seeking to address racial disparities in health access and also addressing biases. Personally, I've sought out training and education around racism and my role as a white American and a government official. Most recently, I was chosen to participate in a statewide training program with the town manager's full support. I've committed to bringing the concepts of cultural humility to our town governance, most recently to our hiring practices. Along with the town manager's support, I'm now endeavoring to bring the concept of white fragility forward to town leaders that we can all engage in this process that's ongoing. As the speaker said last night, it's not about one single training. And the reason I'm giving you that background about myself is that's who I am and when as a professional, as I am also as a resident of Amherst. So when I'm working with the Police Department, the Fire Department, Town Hall, this is the lens I bring to it. So I care passionately about what's happening to people of color around this country in Massachusetts, but I also know that we have a Police Department that is above par and who are really committed to serving this community and open to what comes next. And so I just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Julie. Chief, anything else?
Just your last question, Andy, that was specific to where we stand as far as vacancies and potential vacancies in FY21. So I think Captain Ting mentioned that we do currently have one vacancy now. We will have a second vacancy as early as July 24th, so basically in a week. And we have another vacancy that will be happening on September 1st. Those are all vacancies that we know of. FY21, we have two officers, two more officers who would qualify for retirement as well. So three definite, potentially more, and that's just for retirement purposes. We have had officers leave for other agencies. Most recently, we had one leave for the Mass State Police, and we had one leave for the Rhode Island State Police. So those occur not as frequently, but so that's kind of where we are in a staffing level perspective. I think that covers the three questions you wanted, Andy. I didn't know if there was additional information.
I don't, but the next thing I'm going to do is open it up to questions from members of the Finance Committee and members of the council, and we'll recognize hands as they come from counselors and members of the Finance Committee. Just so that other counselors who hadn't seen the questions are, I mean, it's fairly obvious, what we were looking for was sort of that question, that's always the budget question. We know how much we're spending. What does it what does it essentially provide for the community, what we're spending? Those were the focus of the question. And that's really the focus of the discussion today, and I appreciate very much the responses that we have received from Chief Livingstone and from Captain Young and Captain Ting. Kathy, I do see your hand up, and since I said that would be the next segment.
Thank you very much for responding and also for responding to other questions. I will resend the set that I don't think has been answered yet that aren't budget-related. But I just wanted to follow up on the vacancy question to make sure I understood. When you said one now, one in a few weeks, and then another one, those are vacancies where you don't, you haven't currently identified a trainee that you're bringing in. So those are genuine, you would be starting a process to hire people. I know you, we often front the training costs, and so someone is in pipeline is not maybe the right word, but you know, on their way. Genuine, you haven't started figuring out what you're going to do with those, I mean, other than you know they're going to be vacant.
Right, so we had started, Kathy, we had started the recruitment process probably last January. We tried to get a head start on anticipated vacancies because it takes close to a year from the time we start interviewing to the time an academy is finished before that person is actually working. So, you know, it's not unusual for us to have one or two vacancies because we're at the Liberty or at the state police-run academies. You know, the one in Western Mass only runs twice a year, so if you miss out on that, it's another six to eight months before you can get an officer into that academy. So, you know, there's a lot of planning that's involved, psychological exams, interviews, and all that stuff. So the process to hire just one officer is about a year-long process.
Can I just follow up on it? In terms of meeting standards for police departments on who you can hire and in one of the two, if you're sending out a team of two, is, does, do state regs allow you to have someone that didn't come through the state police academy but came through a different route? You know, a behavioral health route, a crisis management route, the kind of person that you've got right now grant-funded? Would that be a part of the police force in a team of two where the other person's an officer?
I think I kind of know where you're going with. They wouldn't have, obviously, wouldn't have any police powers. They could act as an advocate. It's a little touchy, only because it's the Captain Young mentioned, when we get sent to a call, that's a mental health-type call, we don't always know it's that, so there is a level of safety. I don't know how easy it would be just to have them riding along in a cruiser and respond to that type of call. Certainly, if somebody was available to us to respond at some point within that call, that would be beneficial. It's one of the it's one of the issues we're facing with entities like CSO, ServiceNet. One of the reasons the Police Department is kind of responsible for all of these responses is because we're there 24/7 and they're not. We just had an incident yesterday where we had a mom come to us in the lobby of the police station because she couldn't get hold of anyone at CSO, and she needed immediate assistance with her son. So those are the types of issues that even we have as an agency trying to get the coordination with our partners at CSO and ServiceNet and that sort of thing. I think it's somewhere we'd like to be, but it's going to be a long process.
Okay, thank you. That answered.
Yeah, so maybe I'll do a follow-up question on turning it to a second to domestic violence. I know you have often said, and I've in from my own experience as a former legal aid attorney, two officers going to a domestic violence call, would it be advisable, in in your estimation on a domestic violence call, to bring along somebody from a domestic violence organization, including the one you currently work with, or is that something that happens later in the process?
Yeah, absolutely not. Domestic violence calls are one of the more dangerous calls that police officers respond to, and there were just two officers murdered at a domestic violence call in Southern Texas two days ago. No, I certainly have an advocate available. I mean, the process we have in place right now works great. The advocate is here 20 or 24 hours a week. She does all of the follow-up with the victims and that sort of thing, but for their actual response, typical, she would get involved when we bring the, if there's an arrest made, we would start the process there. If there's no arrest made, if the suspect has fled the scene and we bring the victim back to the police station, she would be involved at the police station, but not at the residence.
Good, thank you. There are several other counselors who've asked to be recognized. I just should note that when I was in legal aid, we, there were two times when we most frequently were working with police officers. One was before we were ever involved, when the initial response came in, and the other was if there was a violation of a restraining order. And violations of restraining orders, at that point, we were representing victim frequently, but police officer interventions, and those can be also from what I observed in my legal aid days, an equally precarious time for police response.
Yeah, and that's kind of why the state changed the law so that when police officers respond to domestic violence-type calls, the preferred response by law, by statute, with our district attorney's office is is an arrest. So the days of just going to do a domestic violence call and keeping peace are kind of long gone. The preferred response is an arrest.
Okay, I'm going to recognize other members of the council for a few minutes, and then I see that Chief Nelson also has something that he'd like to say, so I will bring Chief Nelson from the Fire Department along in a few minutes. But Mandy, Anna Key, you had your.
Thank you. I apologize if I missed the answer to this, but you know, we've been talking about the grant funding that came in 2015 or so for combating combating domestic violence and sexual violence and stalking. And it seemed that in the budget book that that paid for a detective or some sort of personnel. When is that grant supposed to end? And if it ends, what's happening to that position that's been paid for? Is that is that folded into the budget right now? Is it not? Is that position going away? Can you talk a little bit more about that? And like I said, I missed the answer to this earlier.
No, Ashley, Mandy, Joe, your timing on that question is perfect because that grant is in the process. Well, I'll let Ron explain if he's still, Ron, are you still here?
I am, sir chief. So that we are in the final months of that grant. It expires at the end of the federal fiscal year, so September 30. We reapplied back in 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 January for continuation of the grant, which would be based on a 36-month model. Typically, we hear back about that somewhere in August or early September, right before the federal fiscal year begins, the next federal fiscal year. I'm waiting on my hands to see whether or not it will come back, but if it does, it will extend it for either 48 or I scratched that for 24 to 36 months, depending on what their award is.
So if we don't receive the funding for that grant, we expect we're going to see receive the funding at least to cover the cost of the officer. If we don't, that's going to be a discussion we're going to need to have with the town manager and the Finance Committee, I'm guessing.
Thank you.
Anything else, Lynn?
Not at the time, no.
Okay, Lynn, I was going to ask Chief Nelson if he had anything, and then Dorothy Pam in that order. So Lynn?
Yes. One of the questions that has been out there is what are initiated calls? In in the little bit of, you know, response on that, what I've determined is that not all, but some are follow-up calls. And I wonder if there is a way, you know, for example, we have one neighborhood that has often has a fair amount of weekend partying, happens to be in my district, and the officer, Laramie, who is working with the university on issues like that, will often then go by the house on the day after, or maybe the Monday after the party, and talk with the people. Called an initiated call versus follow-up. And I'm wondering if there is a way to classify that, and if you could give us a sense of the initiated calls, how many are really follow-up calls where you're checking back?
Right, so thanks for that question, Lynn. And, you know, I watched last night's council meeting, and of all the comments that I heard, that was the theme of the misunderstanding of what those officers do was really kind of disheartening, because the implication was that we are going and targeting specific neighborhoods, and nothing could be further from the truth. It is actual officer-responsible follow-ups, and it's geared by calls. So for instance, on Philip Street, and maybe I should let Gabe answer this as well, but, you know, there's a lot of follow-up on Philip Street, and there's a lot of follow-up at the shelter when it's open and that sort of thing. Gabe, where are you? Are you still there? Oh, well, Gabe, you want to up in on that?
Yeah, I'm here. I know that there there's a lot of questions relative to the areas that we commonly police and why. So the structure of our of our operations is that we follow a sector-based, problem-oriented community policing model. So we stress productivity, which kind of initiates officer-initiated activity. So we stress that to prevent problems before they happen, to make sure we do a proper job following up with our investigations in efforts to further that prevention. The efforts that we make are to target the source of the problems and not based on ethnicity, race, sex, or class. So our officer-initiated activity is really predicated on the problems identified in every neighborhood in Amherst. So how do we find out about those problems? We learn about the problems when people call in for help or for for service, really. So the self-initiation is a responsive measure or follow-up for that effort of problem solving. So for example, if you were to take a look at some statistics, I know that there was some questions in terms of how often do we patrol North Pleasant Street or the apartment complexes comparatively to more affluent neighborhoods? So if you were to take a look at statistics, for example, if you were to take a look at Wildflower in Amherst Woods, so in 2019, for example, there were two total calls from residents off of that street alone. One call was for an animal complaint, one call was for a medical mental call. We often get complaints of speeders and traffic issues there, so we have a total of five officer-initiated calls in that street alone, and four of them were for traffic and speed enforcement was for a citizen transport. So really, what I'm trying to articulate here is that, you know, our officer-initiated activity is predicated on, you know, what type of issues are in that neighborhood. So if I was to give you another example, Colonial Village is is an area that we commonly respond to. In 2019, there was a total of 80 calls, and if you were to take a look at the makeup of those calls, there were 33 medical assists, 14 well-being checks, 13 domestics, 13 medical mental calls, nine suspicious activity, eight noise complaints, four disturbances, and then a variety of other calls. So our total officer-initiated calls there were 80 calls there. So our officers that went there to initiate, they, it consists of 60 security checks, 19 follow-ups, and one warrant service. So again, what I'm trying to articulate and illustrate here is that, you know, we're not targeting any particular neighborhood. targeting any particular neighborhood for the purpose of targeting people. You know, our sole response is to target the problems at hand. And so, you know, our initiated responses are, again, predicated on what the issues are and the calls for service. I hope that answers your question.
I think it's particularly helpful when you give examples without finger pointing or anything else. So I particularly appreciated the Colonial Village. But I want to go back and say, you referred to that as eighty calls. Was that eighty calls you received and then you initiated follow up?
Let me take a look at my stats here. Yes, we we received eighty calls in total. Just trying to look at my computer system here. And then there were roughly eighty initiated responses, officer initiated responses.
Okay, so and then then we got the sense from the various people last night who came forth to talk to the council. They felt that there was just more police presence in places like Colonial Village, apartment complexes. And so in addition to the calls that you originally responded to and the follow up, would you say that police cars are therefore going into that neighborhood in general to be a presence? Or are that they are there is for the calls and the follow up?
I would say both, ma'am. For instance, there was a couple of months ago, there was a there was an incident where there was a UMass student. She's an international student. She was of Asian descent. And there was some BBs that were shot through her window as long as as well as she had a couple of roommates there. And so therefore, we were trying to investigate that to determine if that was a targeted crime or if that was of some other type of nature. So therefore, we did conduct a lot of follow up. We also had a lot of police officers present in that area for several reasons. A as a deterrent and B to try and figure out who the perpetrators were. And through our investigation, we did figure it out and it it came to a resolution. But we did spend a lot of time there just for that one incident alone. So it it's kind of both, you know, certainly for presence, for a deterrence and as well as a follow up to the incident itself. So if you were to multiply that by how many calls and different problems that we have in that specific area, you know, we're going to have quite a bit of response. So somebody who lives there, they're going to see a presence from the police there. But we're there for a specific reason.
I I urge that you find a way to classify follow up calls so that they're not seen only as initiated. Because to initiate them, you're actually following up on a previous call.
And they are actually classified within our database. And those are statistics that can be produced.
Okay. Thank you for that further explanation.
You're very welcome.
Hey, so I was gonna do Chief Nelson, did you have something that you wanted to offer to the finance committee?
Yes, I do. I can get this. There I go. Well.
Oh, you're here in person.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Good afternoon. I'm here really because just, you know, the railing that's been going on specifically against the Amherst Police Department. All the laws talk about defunding the police and that type of thing. I think those folks need to take the time to understand what our police department does for the community, really take the time to find out what they do and how how they do it. In my my mind, this, you know, stuff that the country is going through right now, it's not the police, it's policing. And there's a subtle difference there. And I and I really believe as a serious, we believe that policing needs to change. But you know, the other piece is that, you know, the Amherst Police Department, they're part of a team, they're part of a public safety, 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 safety team that that works well together. I I came from another, 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 we 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 worked well with the police there. But nothing like it is is here. I was taken taken aback by how close the fire department is working here. And it's and it's a team that's working for the community. And I guess, you know, again, to those folks that are that are coming, coming, coming out specifically against the Amherst Police Department, I ask, you know, what what has our police department done wrong? And compare comparison of what's going on na 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 nationally, not nothing. They do it right. They they're they're operation is something that should be in the way that they do a great, great, they they do a great job. I mean, sure, can there can things be improved? Sure, of course, and every organization can can improve. But and and the Amherst PD is not the Minnesota sort of police, Minneapolis Police Department, it's not the Atlanta Police Department. They don't, that's not how they operate. I mean, one of the one of the things that Chief Nelson said, I think, last last week is that they haven't just just discharged a weapon in forty-two years. You know, and you know, that's, you know, that's that has to be because they have found ways to, yes, escalate situations. They, you know, they they're legally legal, humane ways ways to, yes, yes, that's right. I think you remember a few few years ago, one one of their officers was confronted by a gentleman with a weapon that could have harmed harmed him or himself. In my in my my mind, he would have had every justification to use his weapon, his weapon, his weapon, his weapon. But he he didn't. He found a way around, around, he found a way to escalate and not hurt anyone. You know, the APD is not a threat to this community. They're watching out for you, they're watching out for your families, they're watching out for those you care about. And you know what? They're watching out for my 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 people, my my jobs and make make sure that my my folks are safe. And part of that is our good relationship with the APD. They're 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 with with us at most, 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 probably the fire call, car accident, mental health call, which can be absolutely dangerous. And it's a good feeling our folks have to know that when they're going into a situation that could be kind of dangerous or dangerous, APD is right there with us, watching out for us so we can do our 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 job. These are good people, these are folks that care about this. These are folks that stretch themselves to the nth degree, take care of people, period. That's 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 what they're they're all about. You know, I've been in the fire service thirty-eight years now, about about that, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, nine years, year, 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 years now. So 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 for part of my life, I've been a firefighter. But before that, I was a black man. And once I'm through here, I'm still going to be a black man. And that and and, you know, that's that that is my entire life there. You know, the fire 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 side is far harder than. But there's, I'll tell you, there's not a day that goes by where, you know, in in my times entire life, there hasn't been a day that's gone gone by where someone has not reminded me that I'm different based on race. You know, and and it's, you know, it's, you know, white, white, white people who, you know, I'm not saying that they're racist or that they're big, 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 but they do and say racist and big, big, big thing, which is a subtle difference. I mean, I I've lived all over this country because of my dad's career. And one constant has been those, you know, racist, bigoted attitudes or actions. And that's from the general public and has been from some some police, a, 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 as well. I mean, I I I still still get stops every now, 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 when I'm in my my private car. I still get followed followed around in the department. You know, I still see all that stuff. But you know, you don't see that from APD. You just don't. They're good people. They know what they know what's right. They do it. It's a good police. They do it right. You know, and I think that there are some some groups that are out there, as I said, they're railing against against APD. And in my mind, they're they're they have solutions that are looking for a problem, right? APD is not the problem. And knee jerk reactions to serious, serious issues are not is not the way to go. It needs to be fought, 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 fought. It needs to be re- reason. And again, I mean, I just want to say that, you know, these, this is a good, good police. Defund funding or those types of measures are not the way to go. We need, we need, we need to support them, we need support, support them, you know, with what they're trying to do, their initiatives, because they're good for this, they're watching out for this, they're watching out for all of us. And I said earlier today to the meeting, I'll be damned if I'm going to stand stand by and allow some 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 folks to try to tear down a group of really great individuals. So thank you, thank you. That's all, that's all, that's all I have.
Well, Chief Nelson, thank you very much. I appreciate your contribution, both as your experiences are fire chief and your personal experience and personal comments. So thank you very much. I have a couple of counselors now I'm going to recognize and then we'll take stock of where we are. I want to remind attendees that last night was a time for public hearing and we really valued hearing from the community and will value hearing from public comment later in the agenda. But this was now the committee has to begin to do its thinking and this is kind of a first step and a very important step to take up. This is the first step after the hearing. So Thad, I'm giving us Dorothy Pam, who's been very patient. Thank you, Dorothy, for being patient.
Well, it's it's really hard to speak after that eloquent, the eloquent remarks of Chief Nelson. But I have a couple of comments here. Accepting the fact, and I totally do believe this, that the Amherst Police Department, the answers that we've received at many, many meetings are not doing the things which have brought up the uproar through the country in terms of weapons, in terms of physical force. I'm thinking that there might be some small thing they could do at this time. Restructure some of the follow up calls that now they said they work with people from the other agencies, but using common sense and in consultation with people, some of those calls need not be made with a police officer. And could some of those follow up calls be made by one of the public health professionals with whom that they're working? And perhaps we would, you know, be able to hire another one. Because so much of this has to do with the feeling of of being policed. And it sounds like some of these calls, they have to make them, they're required to make them, they're legally required. It is good for the people that the calls are made. I understand that that's really important. But we I don't think we can just ignore the fact that the feeling of being policed is real, even if there's actually a very good reason for everything that the police department is doing. We also have to acknowledge that if there are more people in an area such as larger housing developments, there are going to be more police calls. We mentioned the the case from Wildwood Lane, there aren't very many people down there. Okay, but some places, it's going, they're going to, there's going to be more police presence because there are more people and people have different problems. But I want to go back to the call that was the the ones that Captain Ting was mentioning because I got confused in the terminology with the Colonial Village. The word officer initiated responses, it sounded to me like the eighty calls were not made by the police department deciding I'll go visit these people, but that people called in for something. So I I think that maybe, maybe I was confused with the terms, but some all those various things, which are just the things that happen with people, sounded to me that that probably somebody called the police department to come. And then the if an officer decides to do or has to do follow up, then that might be an officer initiated response. So I think Lynn was a little confused with some of the terminology there, too. So I would really like to have some clarification on on which calls were initiated by the public calling in saying, I've got a problem, I need some help, or which in fact were initiated by the the police department on their own, which means nobody called.
Yeah, understood, Dorothy, and thanks for that. So and and I'll ask Captain Ting to respond as well. But so, you know, the point of his original explanation was almost all of either officer follow up or officer initiated calls are the result of a call for police services the day before, a week before, or a month before, it can be any combination of both. So for instance, Bill Laramie, I think everybody's familiar with Bill. You know, he may do a follow up on a noise disturbance, but what he's been doing up at Grant Wood Drive, there's been a lot of officer initiated things. So we can certainly try and find a better explanation for characterizing those calls for sure, because I don't want there to be confusion. But with the community based policing model that we use, officers are expected to do both. So there are times when it's going to be a officer initiated call, when it might be a long term type of thing he's working on, or it might be something as something as Bill stopping by the very next morning for a loud noise response that the officers went to, and he wants to speak to these kids when they're sober and say, hey, look, your behavior's unacceptable. That would be follow up. So that's probably something we're going to need to work on as an agency about clarifying what it does with those types of calls. But I think the important thing is, is we don't just randomly drive around neighborhoods looking for people to pester. It's it's the results of calls that we've responded to.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Somebody had their hand up and then took it down again. So I'm assuming that that was a purposeful decision. And I don't see any more hands from the councils. So I'm going to take just a moment to see if anybody else from the council would like to say anything. And if not, I don't know, Mr. Bachman, did you have any concluding comments before we move? Thank the police officers, we can move on to the next agenda section.
Yeah, just just a few things. Andy, so I just want to make sure that people who are on this call and are recognized, so we've listened to them. The chief and his staff were on the on the meeting last night and listened to the full public hearing. So and I think we understand people are coming at this from a place of real concern and anger at what's happening at a national level. I think that the way I've thought about this is it's how Chief Nelson said, it's how we do policing. And I think that's something we want to engage in that conversation. I think that that's something that we are very interested in it. And I think there's a second piece of it, which is sort of systemic change. And I think that's something that we're also interested in in looking at. But they're two different things, and I think that we we are have to focus on both of them at the same time. I think, you know, we can talk philosophically about how change happens. But ultimately, as a town council and town manager, we're responsible for the public health and public safety of our community. And that's why I put in a budget. And that's why I put in a budget that I think meets the needs of the community. And I would encourage the council to move forward with that budget, because I think cutting the budget of the public health or public safety departments at this moment in time during the middle of a pandemic would just be a big mistake. So again, that doesn't mean that the folks who have been communicating very with great passion and very articulate concerns haven't been heard. It means that we have to have that conversation, but it moves in a different way.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm looking one last time to see if there's anybody else from the council or the committee who wishes to speak. Darcy. Please unmute and join us. Darcy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Darcy. Hi.
Hi. Sorry. I just wanted to make a comment that it would be, it looks like there are 12 people that want to make public comments. And that this is a, this is an area where we are saying that we really want to listen to and hear people. So I guess I'm just, I would just suggest that we allow people to speak for three minutes instead of two, because, because we want to hear what they have to say, knowing full well that most people aren't going to have three minutes worth of of comment. So I'm just strongly suggesting that we allow people to speak and be heard.
Thank you for the comment. Sean Mangano, you know who is here from the general government section that was expecting to make presentations on the general government section of the budget, which is what the meeting was originally posted to be. So how many people are here from general government right now?
I think we have six or seven, maybe eight people here for the general government section.
Yeah, thank you. I think that the problem that we have, and I'll look to other members of the committee to jump in if they have any contribution on this, so that it isn't solely my decision on this. We originally had this scheduled as the meeting to hear about the general government department's sections of the budget. And we started an hour earlier in order to have the police be able to respond to questions that we had posed to the police department. And those questions were posed prior to last night's hearing. So I think that we sort of have to decide on how we want to balance our time and respect our employees who want to be able to answer questions about their portions of the budget. Are there other members of the finance committee who want to contribute to what they think we should do here? So no one stepping forward. I think that we have two choices. Pat.
Thank you, Andy. I definitely want to thank the members of the police department who are here for the work that you do. I would like to hear some public comment, but only if people who spoke last night are not, there are people on that list who haven't spoken, and I don't know whether we could sort through them or not, but I would be willing and I'd be willing to listen to some of those comments, but I'm not sure how you sort them. But I think if people have spoken last night, that we know what they're going to say today, and I don't mean that disrespectfully at all.
Any other comments? Mandy?
I know I'm not on finance, but I do think out of respect for our town staff who are sitting in a meeting and not able to do their work until we get to them and ask them their questions, we should, given that the agenda had public comment on last respect their time and at least maybe even if all of that conversation can't be completed, maybe at least the presentation portion of general government and any direct questions to staff can be so that they can get on with their day and get their jobs done.
That's kind of my inclination too. And so speaking to members of the public, we certainly do plan to have public comment. And if you need other, if there are other things that you need to do, and you don't want to hear about the general government sections of the budget, why don't we you certainly can leave the meeting and come back on. It will be probably about 45 minutes or so before, at least 45 and probably not more than 60. So I'd say if you leave the meeting, please come back in 45 minutes so that we can, when we get to public comment, we can do so. But I think I will follow through and turn it back to Mr. Mangano, who's going to indicate to us the order in which we're going to go through the general government sections and make any, he or the town manager might make introductory comments about the general government section. And for everybody's reminder, the budget is available in full on the town website under the government tab and then budgets. And then you'll find the town manager's budget in the, what's called the post-COVID section. Sean?
I think we were just going to go right through the general government section, except for the facilities, because you heard that at the previous meeting. So that would be Mr. Bachman first, and then finance, and then we'll just keep going through the, through the list. And the department heads that are here will speak to each section.
Okay. So the general government section of the budget begins, I believe, on page 20 roughly. That's certainly where the, or 19 is where the town manager section and the town council section is before. So why don't I start with the town manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. So the town manager budget shows an increase of 21.5%. That's, that's an increase mainly because of a reallocation of two positions. One is the position of clerk of the council, who is 75% under the town council's budget and 25% under the town manager's budget. That position hadn't been budgeted to before previously. So that's, that's now plugged into the budget. The other is the reallocation of the communications officer position, which had previously been in the IT department budget, and it's more appropriately in the town manager's budget for 75% of the time, 25% of time still in town managers in the IT department. We've removed in terms of expenses, we've removed travel from the operating budget, because there's, there are no, there are not going to be conferences, and we're not going to be going to conferences this year, I don't think. So that's, that's the summary of our budget.
Jay, Glenn?
Thanks. I will note that we did not remove it under town council. However, I think we can assume that we are going to be seeing a change in that, in that there will probably not be a physical mass municipal association meeting this year. And we may also have counselors that just choose not to go. And so we may find that as we get closer to January, the line of operating expenses, which I believe includes MMA, will not be as great. It still includes things like minute takers for council meetings. So I don't want to say that it would be completely gone.
Did you have any, anything else you wanted to ask about the first two sections of the budget?
Are you talking to me, Andy?
Yes.
A list of about 25 questions, and they have since been answered in a document that Sean and others have prepared. Sonya, and I'm perfectly satisfied with those. And to the extent that they need to be discussed, that's great. And you can see the questions that I asked, because this is the section that I have to write up. So I have, you know, I kind of stated my case of questions and people should go ahead with their presentations.
Yeah, Andy, I'll just add that the questions on general government are posted on the finance committee page in the packet section for today's meeting. So if anybody wants to go and look at those questions and the responses that were provided, they're available there.
Okay. And for anybody who can't find that, it actually is very easy to find. Just go to the town website, government, then the town council section. And under the town council section is committees and then the finance committee, under finance committee, you'll find packets in the packet for today's meeting. So that's all. The questions and the answers have been posted there and are available to anybody who seeks to go look for them.
I also want to say thank you for all the time that it took to answer those questions. And Paul, I know you jumped in on the human resources side to let us know what training looks like and so forth. I think it did help elaborate on the budget document. And Sean, I look forward to how we can look at ways to tweak the budget.
Okay. Looking at the hands up, Kathy, do you have questions either about the town council or town manager section?
I, well, I have a question that is cross-cutting. So it starts, I'm just looking at the pages. I had a question about why something was done in the budget book on legal services. So I can bring it up later, just to ask for the rationale. And so it was removed as a line item and put within another group. So we'll lose the trend. So that was, you know, I'm assuming it's a town manager decision, because you control the legal budget. So I'm not sure where it got grouped before, but it's gotten grouped now that it's no longer a line item. And then I had a, just a cross-cutting one, so we can come back to it. If we want internal staff, so gap that work for you or in general government to do studies where there's data available. So we had a fire EMS staffing question on the old staffing report updating it. Parking fees, parking policies, different design of North Commons. Is there a team that's in your office and other general government offices that can come together and do something on staff time? So those were my two questions that didn't seem to fit specific to other categories.
Okay, Paul?
So Sonya will address the legal question, I believe. So on the second one, yes, I am your staff person. So when you have a question, that's my job under the charter and that's, I mean, I devote a lot of time to helping you find the answers that you want. And so I ask you to, I've asked why we've always funneled things through the town manager's office, because my responsibility is the staff who are hired under the town. And if there are questions and things that the council wants to ask and wants to pursue, those are things that we will assemble the appropriate people. That's our job to serve you like that. Sonya, did you want to address the legal thing?
Yeah, that was just our attempt to kind of streamline the budget book a little. We had like two or three pages dedicated to legal that really said nothing. So we just put it under general services, right along with the audit and property and casualty insurance and stuff. But I see your point, and I think in next year's budget, we can just create another line in the general services budget that shows you what's expended in history.
Okay, because it was just, we lose the trend if it just.
I understand that now. Thank you for bringing it up.
Just purely that. Now, at first I thought we didn't need any legal services next year until the other budget.
No, we were trying to be efficient, but realized it took away the detail that's important for everybody to see. So we will fix that next year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we go on to finance? Sean, I guess you might be on for that.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to speak on behalf of a few different units. The overall finance department is comprised of accounting, treasury, collection, and assessing. And all of those department heads are here today. We have Cheryl Boucher, Jen LaFountain, Liz Duffy, and someone that not many people know, Sonya Aldrich, our controller. And so they're available to answer any questions, but I'm going to do a brief overview of the budget and then just talk about some of the projects and goals that we're working on this year. Before I get into that too much, I did want to acknowledge all the staff that I just mentioned, and also some of the staff that they supervise. They all worked pretty much straight through the pandemic. When people were staying at home, they came in to really keep up the operations running here at town. And they did a great job keeping things going. And they continue to, with their staff, help support different areas of the town. We have some employees, whether it's parking or the front counter, who their jobs have changed, because there's, that work is no longer really going on. And so they shifted to help other areas of the town, like Puffers Pond or Cherry Hill. And staff have been super flexible and we really appreciate their their ability to adapt and go with the flow on things. In terms of things that we're working on, so Lynn alluded to this a little bit, one of our goals for this year is to update the budget document. And we want to get your input on things that you'd like to see and ways we can make it more useful to everybody. And all these goals I'm going to mention, they're all team goals. They're the things that either cross departments within finance or they're, they cross departments within, within the town as a whole. So we're going to review our finance policies. So the document on the website was last put together in 2012, which was pre-charter change. So we're going to look at those finance policies, make sure they're up to date, see if we want to add anything to them. And obviously we'll share that all with you. We're going to update our OPEB funding plan, which Mr. Hector made sure that I explain what OPEB is, so Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is essentially health insurance obligations for retirees. There's been a couple of changes to the funding plan. One, our obligation every year is valued by an actuary. And there were some changes that were pretty significant last year. And also the contribution that we made in this year's budget, we reduced in half. So it's going to be important to look at that funding plan, come up with a strategy for the next five to 10 years, and also take a long view as to how much longer till we fund it. We are looking to streamline our benefits process. We've collaborated between HR and payroll for many years. It's worked out fine, but there's ways we can improve that. And so that's one area we'll be looking to make some improvements. We're going to continue to expand online payments. We did a lot during the pandemic and put a lot of things online. But there's even more we can do, especially with the new software that's in the planning department or on permitting and rental registration. There's a lot more we can move online and make it even easier for people to pay bills or purchase services from the town. We're going to do a comprehensive review of fees. There's some fees in town that haven't been looked at or or maybe they haven't been looked at, but they just haven't changed in a long time. So we're going to review all the fees. There's hundreds of fees. Much more than on the school side. When I looked at it, I got a little nervous at schools. We had like 12 fees. And we're going to look at those. We're going to compare it to our neighbors and come back with maybe some recommendations around what our fees look like if they're at the right level. We're going to, obviously, one of the big things for the town is to continue to support the capital improvement program. And there's some data that's requested per the charter and also working with the council. We want to put together a complete packet of information every year for all of you. And so that's going to be a major goal this year is to get that all together. And a couple, two more. Sustainability has been a huge initiative of the town. We want to, and the finance teams really help to support that initiative. Come up, brainstorm, identify potential funding strategies that we can. Maybe they're not good ones, maybe the bad ones, but we want to stir up different ideas that the town council and finance committee and others can consider and help us move closer to that goal. And then the last one, the easy one, we want to update our website and make it much more user-friendly, keep the information as accurate as possible and as up to date as possible, and make it easier to access information. And so the last thing I'll just point out is the finance budget is going down 8.2%. And so the last thing I'll just point out is the finance budget is going down 8.2%. That's because a couple of the budget reductions in this year's budget were in finance. There was a halftime budget analyst position that was reduced and there was a halftime position in the assessor's office that supports the assessor that was reduced. And so it's going to definitely put more stress on the department. We are confident that we can work collaboratively within our own teams to cover the, everything that needs to be covered. But it will require us to collaborate even more than we have in the past and we're up for that challenge. And that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also have all the, the specific department heads here that can answer questions as well.
Thank you. The one question I have, did you indicate that you're looking at the financial policies themselves? And whether there are any revisions?
So there's a, on the finance page, there's a, there's been policies that were posted. I think they were created by Sandy Poole or in conjunction with Sonya and other department heads. I'm sure Sherry and Jen helped work on it. It includes the town's investment policy. It's where the, the guidelines around reserve levels comes from. And so that, that policy manual is dated 2012 and it's something we want to make sure is still up to date. See if there's any references to town meeting or anything like that. I'm also see if there's anything else we think should be in there.
Okay. The reason I bring that, that's the financial, financial policies and objectives, I believe it's.
I think so. Yeah.
And being a member of the finance committee that developed those, the history of that was, was actually developed by the original, by the old finance committee, which was a committee of the town meeting. And it was designated as a role of the finance committee and it was done well. John Musanti was finance director, was the original development, though it was amended when Mr. Poole was the finance director. I think that it is now a policy that belongs to the council. And so I, we will have to get a decision as to how the council will handle it. But I assume the council will work for, through the finance committee to make recommendations on proposed changes. And then the changes would probably have to go to the council.
Okay. Yeah, that's something we will definitely work with the proper channels on.
Yeah, Lynn, I don't know if you had anything to add to that or?
No, I frankly thank you for that history as well. I frankly didn't know that. But my question, financial policies is if they have any implications for things the council needs to do or approve or look at. I don't think there'll be implications for bylaws, but we have asked other committees who have alluded to our other departments who've alluded to doing things that might lead to changes in bylaws to give us plenty of heads up on that. The other, along with this though, I, in the same manner, I don't know honestly what the council's relationship or responsibility is with regard to setting fees. But even if we don't have to approve them, I'm sure you would like to know about the changes. And the only other comment is it's a very, very, very ambitious set of goals. I wish.
Yeah, they're, they're all projects. I'm not saying they're all, they'll all be done necessarily, but we have a really talented team here and we want to make progress on all of them.
I, I appreciate them. I just, if you have a few ongoings in the budget book next year, that's okay by me. Okay.
Okay. So we called some members of the committee and the council. Bob Hegner?
Hey, thanks. I, I have three questions. On page 23, the last long range of objective is to establish property values of all UMass real estate. And I'm wondering why the town is involved with that and whether we're getting reimbursed for our, our effort. And then I have two questions on parking. What is that on page 25? The parking ticket correct collection rate is significantly lower than like property tax collection rate. And is that due to out of state cars and things like that? People basically just ignoring the ticket? And then I noticed also in 18 and 19, parking permits that were issued increased about 10, 12% per year. And I'm wondering if that trend is continuing and at one point that becomes a, and we start running out of spaces. So, thanks.
So why don't we start with your first question and I'll turn it over to Liz to talk about the, the UMass properties and how that's going.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me today. Basically what we're looking at is just as a rule, look at the properties that we receive pilots back from to make sure that we haven't overlooked any, any options to increase our pilot. And you know, it hasn't really been fully looked at from an appraisal standpoint. I do apologize for the phone. I have no idea how to silence it. But anyway, I think you get the point. Obviously, you know, the state has a formula. And right now we are not getting as much from the UMass pilot as our neighboring town. And I did look into it further and the formula doesn't seem to make sense, but we have to have a good case to actually question it. But if there's any other questions, I'm here to answer it.
No, thanks. That's very helpful.
And Bob, we'll get back to you on the parking questions. We're going to dig into those a little more. The first question was, why is our collection rate lower, right, for parking tickets and lower than what we get for property taxes? Well, can you restate your second question again?
It was about the parking permits issued by the town. If you look on page 25, the number goes up about 10 or 12% from 17 to 18 and from 18 to 19 each year. And it's just a question of whether that's a trend and whether that's going to put pressure on downtown parking.
Okay. Yeah, we'll dig into those numbers a little bit and we'll get you, we'll send it out to the whole group.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. I think that Mandy was next.
Bob actually asked one of my questions with the review of the property values for UMass. I think you answered this with that though. We get pilots from the state under a state formula, as you said, if we increase the valuations, if redoing these review of property value increases those those valuations, will the state reimbursement automatically increase because of how the state figures is out? And then would we also have an additional ability to negotiate that separate one under the strategic partnership agreement? So I was just trying to figure out how the review of those valuations might affect revenue coming into town for state owned land through the state appropriation, not a strategic partnership. And then the other one was, I noticed we're still issuing payroll checks in paper. And many employers have moved to requiring EFTs for payroll. And I was wondering why we haven't done that yet, because I presume that would save money.
So I'll answer the, the second one really quickly, Liz, and then if you want to just talk a little bit about how that formula for UMass properties is put together. As a accounting background, we definitely want to move towards all direct deposits. It does make things easier, less time stuffing checks. You don't have to worry about checks getting lost, all those types of things. We haven't yet made it a requirement, but it is something that we can consider. And I just know that a lot of times there are some people that make an argument why they, they don't want that going directly to their bank account. They, they like a physical check each week. Yeah, but we do, we are seeing more and more move towards direct deposits and we always try to encourage it whenever new people come on.
Holly, correct me if I'm wrong here, Holly, but I think all new employees are automatically put on direct deposit. It's basically the people that have, that were here before.
You're muted, Holly.
Yes, that is correct. There was some bargaining unit, bargaining agreement changes that require all new employees to have direct deposit, but there are some older employees who have been around for many years who are grandfathered and are still getting paper checks as well as part-time hourly people. We encourage, we highly encourage them to get direct deposit, but there are a few who are still taking paper checks.
Can you do anything else if not?
Do you want to weigh in on that UMass question real quickly?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Basically, the way that the formula works doesn't, seems a bit archaic. I think in the time that they, they developed this formula, perhaps it made sense at the time, but it's time to have it revisited.
Yeah. And if I can just jump in on that, this is just to give us ammunition and knowledge so we can take it to the state to say, you need to revisit the formula. Right now Hadley gets more money than the town of Amherst has and it's based on sheer acreage, the way we understand it. It's not based on any improvement to the buildings. So which is, it doesn't address the impact on the community on what is on that acreage. It just looks at the acreage.
Right. So, so that's something we should be lobbying our state rep and senators and all four as we get that information?
When we're ready. Yeah.
Okay.
Kathy?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on this because it had come up. So I want to ask, do we also, do we also already have the valuation of Amherst College? Cause one of the things that has been helpful in some communities, Paul, when you talked about negotiations, there have been proposals that suppose we looked at only 20% of the value, what would the payment be? Smith, the Northampton mayor used that with Smith College to get their contribution rate up. Burlington used it with the University of Vermont to get their, so it was an ability to have a valuation of how many millions and what is being paid compared to a property. And UMass has always been, there was no number to even look at it. So I think it's a, you know, if we can get money because of the formulas fix, whatever imbalance it is, but it's been a, you know, what does UMass Lowell pay? What does UMass, whatever? We haven't had that base. And it requires doing this kind of valuation. So I'm thrilled to see this as, as an effort. So it's not just someone making a guesstimate.
Thank you.
Dorothy?
Okay. So I'm going to go back to the parking permits and I'm going to just mention some complaints that I've received. Reasons to them, the parking permits increased, at least most people think, because of the building of two new downtown apartment buildings, which did not include sufficient parking. And so some people were not happy with the fact that out of cars with out of state licenses were taking the space in front of their house all the time. But the main thing I would say that we as a finance committee would think about is the fees that are getting paid are very, very low. It's almost like a, a benefit you're giving somebody. I mean, was it 25 a year or something? So if you're going to sell the plots on neighborhood streets to people to park on, I think the town should at least make some money.
And that's, yeah, just a quick follow up. That's one of the reasons why we're going to look at all of our fees this year. And again, we'll compare it to what Northampton does and what other cities do on that front.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Yeah, cause the only other thing that I had thought about, and I don't want to get into a very long thing on this because we're talking one day. But Liz, you're also the one who's responsible for looking at our new growth estimates. And our, and new growth, of course, figures into what our and you were looking at the, the projection for next year is almost a 50% cut, which I assume is due to what you're looking at for activity for next year due to what's happened with the economy because of COVID. Do you have any sense at this point going out, whether that's lower level is something we should be assuming into the future for the next couple of years?
It's hard to say. Most folks that I am talking to in the, in the know are on a wait and see kind of situation. The drivers for this community are obviously the colleges and the actions the colleges take have a direct impact on your financial for all your, your feeding businesses. So unfortunately, it is a kind of wait and see kind of situation to see what your colleges are going to do and how it's going to impact your financials. Because basically what I'm hearing from the commercial population is you have a number of people that are saying, hey, let's, let's renegotiate my rent or I can't make my rent. I'm, I'm going to fold up shop. I can't make it through this time. But you also have a good contingency of people that have been looking for that opportunity to get in on the Amherst market. So we've got a lot of things playing rolling. We'll really have a latency.
We have two, we have two buildings that the town council has spent a lot of time looking at. One on Southeast Street and the other one on, I guess it's University Drive Extension South. Are those assumed into the 21 additions to new growth?
Yes, yes. Those will be new growth for 21, I believe. And, and we have some new growth for 20. Cause remember, we do do with the percentage complete as of June. So we have some of those buildings that are partially finished, including 26 Spring Street. Is it 408 North Hampton Road, the Aspen Heights? We have quite a few new improvements that have been going up around the community. Not to mention, since folks have been home, they're putting a lot of decks, pools, additions and so forth on their existing homes. And as far as the resale on your homes has not really moved too much. You've seen some people that said, oh, you know, this is too uncertain. I'm going to, I'm going to wait. I'm going to take my, my property off the market and wait, which reduced the inventory even more than it was already reduced. So the supply and demand here is still fairly good. But I think it's our commercial industrial properties that, you know, really have more of a wait and see. And not so much in the industrial, but obviously in the apartments that fall under, believe it or not, our residential, even though they're multiple units. They fall under our residential category, which is new for me, because usually we would consider those commercial over four units. But in the state of Massachusetts, it's considered residential.
Okay. Well, very much. That's helpful. Kathy, and then we'll move on to human rights and human resources.
Just a quick follow up on Andy's. I, I asked this last year, but I just wanted to try to understand it better. Up by us, I'm in North Amherst. We have a huge complex that was already new growth. It's, but it's been opening. If all of the commercial part of it, all the square footage remains empty, does that change your calculation on what the tax rate is on it? Or does it not change until they lower the rent, rent, you know, it's, it's, it's sitting there waiting for somebody to say, I want to be in there, but so far it's empty. And I think one of the big buildings that's just about to open up isn't full either. So what happens if people misjudge the market and they open and the apartments aren't full? If the rents start coming down, does that change what we tax them at?
It is based on a lot of factors. When a building is incomplete, we tend to lean more towards the cost approach. When it becomes occupied, fully occupied, or what we call a stabilized rent situation, then we lean more towards the income approach to value. But saying that, you do have to have a certain amount of logic going into it when considering the value vacancy, especially on environmental impact. That would just be ignorant for me to dissuade that from the, the calculation. However, you know, it's kind of on the same situation with your own home. You may have had four kids when you had a large family there, but you still have three bedrooms in your home. But you don't have four kids occupying those three bedrooms. There's still value in the home as a three bedroom. Just as there is still value in an apartment complex that may have, you know, more than 20% vacancy or 30% vacancy. So there is, it's a weighing. It's, it's kind of too complicated to give you in a short conversation. Okay. But I'd be glad to give you something more in depth if you want to reach out.
Okay. I will though. I'll follow up. Okay, I will though, I'll follow up. Thank you.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to.
Andy, can I say something?
Yes.
I wanted to acknowledge Holly Bowser, who's here. I wanted everyone to know that she plays a huge role in our budget.
Hi Holly.
She took on a whole lot of, she took on the budget, halftime budget position that we just eliminated. She took on most of those duties and without her, I would not have survived the last four years. So and I love her purple hair. Thanks Holly.
Holly, thank you for all you do, and thank you for saving Sonia's sanity.
I don't know if she did that, but she helped a lot.
No, she did. She definitely did.
I thank you very much, Sonia. I think some days I make her more insane, but there are also days that I do save it.
Sean, should we turn on to human rights and the human resources?
So Paul, I don't know if you want to say a few things for this section. We obviously have a vacancy there.
Sure. So this is this is a basic budget. It calls for a human rights director, human resources director and human resources manager. We have placed the human rights position in this position. But when we we are prepared to take funds to allocate it for human rights complaints to a outside person. If we need to do that at this point in time, right now for human rights, Jen Moisten is coordinating the Human Rights Commission's work. Done a tremendous job at that, honestly. And that's the 0.5% the 0.5 position that you see in there. That's Jen Moisten's position.
Any questions? Lynn.
Yeah, Paul, would you just explain what you just said?
I'll try to say it again in English. So we have a human resources. These two, the human resources and human rights, they're both HR. They get confusing for people. So I'm going to talk about one first. The human resources position is the director of human resources. There's a human resources manager. And those are the two positions that run our human resources operations, everything from our trainings to our recruitment, to handling collective bargaining grievances, all things like that. In addition, at one point in time, the human resources director was placed in that position when Deb Bradway had that position and took on those additional duties of human rights director. There weren't a lot of demands on that other than supporting the Human Rights Commission. And with Evelyn's departure, Jen Moisten, with actually Evelyn's support, has taken on more responsibility for the human rights piece. And has really actually brought that to a whole new level, I think, than anybody had anticipated. So, you know, providing a lot of direction actually to the Human Rights Commission and taking a real leadership role with that group.
Thank you.
And is it, do you have any sense as to how long the position might be vacant for human resources director?
So human resources, we have advertised, we have, I haven't checked lately. We had last time we looked, we had 26 applications, some very good ones. We are setting up a team to do the interviews, review the applications to the interviews and hopefully get that done as soon as we can. We have two major recruiting efforts going on right now. Human Resources Director and Health Director, and they're on a parallel path.
Yeah, unfortunately, they were both working very much on the COVID-19 and with the Human Resources Director, working on policies and practices for our own staff. Have we been hampered in our COVID-19 responses with both of this?
Well, obviously, the position is needed. We had a reopening committee. We had a committee that was set up that included people from IT and human resources and planning and treasures office, collector's office. Who are all participating. So there is support there. But in terms of the day to day management, it's we're a little bit hampered. But our human right resources manager has been here for a while, and so she's been stepping up. And she's the acting human resources director right now, and is not a candidate for the position.
Dorothy, any question?
I I just wanted to make an obvious comment that it's really too bad. And I understand it was really beyond our control that the human rights, human resources and health. Are first of all such small departments in the first place. I mean, these are areas which I believe the people have been saying they feel they should be increased. And I just want to make the statement that I hope in next year's budget, we have more resources devoted to in this area. That's it.
Thank you.
But as we all know, getting more resources is a challenge with all the different areas where we want to put new resources. But that's a discussion to come. But thank you. I, if there's nothing else we should turn on to employee benefits to keep this moving.
Yeah, I can speak to this one briefly. So this is primarily health insurance, but it also has some of the other insurances. Sonia, feel free to correct me if I mistake anything. So mostly you know this, but we are now with Maya, we're no longer self insured. So we know what our premium is for the year. We have a projected decrease in health insurance, which is a combination of rates coming in lower than expected and also our enrollment. But this is also where we added funds to fill some gaps in our insurance coverage where we were self insured. One of the ads that was highlighted during the presentation last night, that that's the section here where the where that can be found. And I think if there's any questions between Sonia, Paul and I, we can we can answer them.
Are there any questions? Bob.
Yeah, I had two questions. The the first one is there's a note on page 31 that said that it says Amherst manages the health and life insurance plans. For all employees of the regional school, schools, the elementary schools and the town of Pelham. And I'm wondering for the regional schools in Pelham, is there some sort of cost sharing with the other the other towns? And then the amounts shown for health insurance, et cetera, on page 32. Is that only the Amherst share? Or is that the total amount, including all of these employees that that, you know, of the regional schools, et cetera?
Yeah, so I'll take a first crack at it, Sonia, and then if you want to fill it out. So in terms of the health insurance plans, so the schools do process their own health insurance and they do all their own balancing and everything. Really, I think that mostly relates to the checks get sent to the town and they eventually all get sent together to Maya. The town does provide a little support in terms of reconciling if there's any issues, but most of that happens at the school level. And then to the the next page, that would be just the town share, wouldn't be the combination. So that would just be the cost to the town of health insurance and other insurance accounts.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I just want to, on page 31 in that comment, it also means our IAC, we work with the IAC to manage all of our plans and stuff. So we do it for all of the entities since we were all self insured together. So.
One question on this, the way it's worded, it says towns of town of Pelham. Are we just doing the school employees of the town of Pelham? Are we also providing insurance to other employees of the town of Pelham?
The town of Pelham is also included. The the regional schools actually do the payroll for the town of Pelham because it's so small. And the the number of employees with health insurance is very, very few. So so it does include.
So these, but the assistance still comes from the region. Okay, Lynn, and then Kathy, so Lynn.
Partially a question I asked, and I don't think I asked this thoroughly, and that is what were we self insured on before?
Self insurance.
No, so Paul, do you want to weigh in on this one a little bit around workers' compensation insurance and injured on duty?
Yes, so we had been to health insurance, which was the major sign. And that's the that's the last three years, the work we had done to go to a fully insured program there. And then we have workers' compensation and injured on duty, which is basically workers' compensation for police and firefighters and call firefighters who are injured on duty. And that was a giant liability that we had because if someone gets injured on duty, we would have to fund that. So purchasing insurance, I'm a big believer in buying insurance to limit our liability. So that was the biggest vulnerability I felt we had at this moment in time, especially when you enter into a down economy, you start to pay attention to that. So that was one of the coverages that we obtained.
Okay, and that's just that a whole different question. It's actually not related necessarily to this section. And that is, in terms of our buildings and equipment, are we self insured or do we carry insurance?
We have insurance for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Kathy.
Um, Bob focused on page 32 on the costs. If that is that just Amherst? Is the head count on page 31, everybody? You know, so so when I look at how many people have family or how many, or is that just? So that's my question.
Holly, Holly or Sonia, do you know if that includes region and Pelham employees or is that just Amherst's town and elementary?
I think it's just town.
I believe, looking at those numbers, that it would be everybody.
Yeah.
It would include all entities.
Okay.
I'll double check with Teresa.
It's not a, it's not a big issue, but it just lets you see how many people are out there with a Medicare sup. You know, and that's also linking it to OPEB on things we're paying for. So I just think it's it's useful.
Yeah. That you'll see in those numbers is when you see from FY17 to FY18, there was a pretty significant drop or realignment. I'm pretty sure that's when we switched to be switched to Maya. We did a full reenrollment and we saw the numbers changed quite a bit.
And do you, I guess, you know, on family versus individual, I don't actually like these policies, but they save the town money. Do you encourage someone to not take family if their spouse has coverage? So that you have a person with the, you know, where where the kids and the spouse go? Or is it completely up to the employee? I mean, some employers give an incentive to opt into the other employer. What people call it other people's money is another way of thinking about it.
We don't like verbally encourage them, but there is an opt out program where employees, if they want, if they have health insurance with us and they leave, leave to go to a spouse's plan. We, there's incentive, a financial incentive they get every year for that. And that was actually one of the things when we did the full reenrollment with Maya, we saw many people take, take that incentive. And it saved quite a bit of money for the town, or at least for the schools, I don't know about the town. But I know that year we saw the school save a lot of money because of that opt out program.
Okay. You know, the one, the one place I saw it work in reverse for this local public schools is Dartmouth University at one point had such a bad plan that all the Dartmouth employees tried to get on the local school system. You know, I mean, you know, people look at their benefit packages, but thank you.
Yeah, I just want to state that the numbers in the book is for the entire membership.
Okay.
All of them. The last bill was like 1532, right, Holly, memberships?
Okay, thank you.
Sean Hannan is here for information technology.
Sean Hannan, the IT director, run through my stuff pretty quickly, I think. So nothing too new or exciting in our budget. We have personnel changes. We have the communication manager, as Paul mentioned, was moved three, three fourths of her was moved from IT to the town manager's budget. Just to reflect the the nature of that position, the communication manager. Some of the big, big accomplishments for the year. We did a lot of cybersecurity training through a state grant that we received. We started the implementation of our new application. Our new permit and license application software. It basically takes every, pretty much every license permit application that's received in across multiple departments. A lot in communication, conservation and development, but also down to the town clerk's office, the fire department, DPW. All those departments that'll support that. We implemented a new application tracking software along with the human rights department, human resources department. And they and IT received a state innovation award for that. Probably the biggest thing that was really boring to most users, but exciting to us as we performed a major server migration and upgrade that we went from. From about six year old infrastructure to really fast new servers or all flash storage, which basically means they're instead of a lot of spinning parts in them, they're all solid state. And really, the the big benefit to that is there, there are some things that happen within GIS that are literally a hundred times faster. So that's pretty exciting. It's also uses a lot less energy. So that was pretty exciting. The stuff that we have coming up that we've started working on for the upcoming slash current fiscal year. Continuing the application software. The next big thing is the rental permit applications, running that through the new system that will save a lot of time and effort in the conservation development department. We've got new fiber being installed under the previous Comcast contract we had. We were receiving service over the fiber I net that's going away this calendar year. So we have signed a contract to have new fiber installed. That's been ordered and it's it's going to be on its way to us and they're going to put that up on the polls. It's pretty exciting. We have a new GIS based map, so they did a flyover. It's the imagery that you see in the GIS system as well as the topographical information that's used across a bunch of departments. That happens every 10 years. That's, that's been updated, being updated. But made a major upgrade to our Munis financial system, moving that on to new virtual servers, upgrading that. And then wifi upgrades to start with indoor wifi upgrades. We, we, everybody trying to do Zoom calls now, the wifi, people moving around in buildings to find wifi where it works and it's not terrible. So we're doing that indoor wifi within town buildings and then address the outdoor wifi after that. That's what I've got.
Yes, if you people's questions. Dorothy, Lynn and Kathy, so Dorothy.
Okay, so this is Deshaun. After you get everything done in the town and everything is automated and upgraded, just so you don't feel there's nothing to do. Lay a marker for, I think, a future movement that I've been on my mind, which is I think maybe the town of Amherst is going to need to provide wifi to the apartment complex. And that could be a major social justice movement thing. I just thinking about how if you can't connect, then you can't really participate in any of this. So we need a gift from the gods for that, I know, but I'm just saying that that might be something in the future.
Yeah.
Lynn.
Actually, my statement or question was very much along Dorothy's. And if this last, if this pandemic has taught us anything, and that is that we do need to make wifi much more accessible to certain areas of town. I know when we first did the whole decision, this I replacing the Comcast I net, we looked at that and said, no, we don't want to become a provider. But as we move through issues related to social justice, access to learning and just general public access, I think we may need to revisit that. And look for money to support it. Great.
Yeah. Being former select board member who is on the negotiating team for the Comcast and Amherst media contracts. I think that we were just trying to figure out, since Comcast was insisting that they were no longer going to provide the I net. That we need to do something. that we need to do something and we were just trying to figure out how we could pay for a fairly expensive operation to replace what we were not going to get in the next through the entire term of the next contract. And Sean and Paul were also part of that negotiating team and Doug Slaughter. So they, they can add anything that they might have to add to it. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. Kathy?
I'm, I think we're building all on the same piece, the I net. When you do the downtown area, how far does it extend to? And a question I have on how easy it is to add some pieces. For example, if and when, so let's say when we build a new elementary school, could it extend, can it extend as far as Wildwood or Fort River? Can we do direct linkages? Or is that way beyond, I know it's way beyond downtown, the way you've defined it. So, so this notion of if you start someone, can you build pieces? And then the other piece is on the social justice side. I'm sure energetic town people who are constantly looking for grants have looked to see whether there were any under that label out there. And I have no idea whether the Gates Foundation is doing any funding of this, but they have the kind of money that if they decided linking low income communities when people and as people probably know, Bill Gates gave a TED talk early on in pandemics before there was one, but he's been very active on these issues. I just have no idea and it would have to be a very deep pocket big foundation. And the Gates Foundation is one of them that has focused in the past on fiber optics, computer systems without promising that we will only buy Microsoft for the rest of our lives. But, you know, so I just, you know, just this notion of can we link up at least the people who otherwise wouldn't be linked? Or that makes sense because there are public buildings.
So, so I can jump in on a little bit of that. So the school department, when they went virtual, did have an inventory of all the students and what their internet capacity was. They provided hotspots. They tried to work with Comcast to a certain extent and Verizon. They both came out with programs, but they're all, each one of them was a little bit funky in one way or another. Either you had to have credit, which a lot of folks didn't have or things like that. They just had these sort of hoops that some folks just couldn't get through. And so, but we did, the district did buy a whole bunch of hotspots that people could activate to access. So no one was left, their, their intention was that no one would be inhibited from connecting to school because of lack of internet access. But I think what you guys are talking about is a globe, more of a larger scale approach, which would make in essence, the town become more of a competitor to Comcast. And for that, that's a significant investment that would require a revenue source. And whether we want to get into that field, we've talked about not getting to into that field previously and then declined doing it because it's not something that we do. We're not in that business, but it's certainly something we can explore again. So.
Okay. And it's just, I know some of the small communities in Vermont have banded together to do fiber optics as a group because no one, for the same reason that, and they have a central manager and, but it, it took a team organizing to go town to town, to town, to town to
Right.
a critical mass before they could then do anything. So I realize it's a much bigger project, but just trying to think of where we could build on at least some pieces we've started.
It was a major effort of both Schutzeberry and Leverett that set up their own systems. And this was something that took years and years of their work to get it going. As far as the other quest, parts of it. The connectivity to elementary schools is already a part of the current I net, correct Sean?
Yeah. So the fiber install that we have going up will connect twenty three sites, which include all the schools. And actually includes Groff Park now and Mill River.
Great.
Pool as well. So quickly, you know, wifi is great for a relatively small coverage area. So if you want to cover a parking lot, if you want to cover the parking lot behind town hall, you want to cover relatively small area like that, it's great. It does not travel through trees and most buildings very well. So when you start looking at apartment buildings in order to provide coverage there, you really, you really need to get inside the building to provide adequate, adequate coverage. It's not to say that it can't be done, but we have, we have some wifi on the bangs roof and it covers. It covers part of Anne Wayland, but only one side of Anne Wayland. And so it kind of comes a problem because we don't cover the other side of Anne Wayland with that wifi from, from the bank center roof.
And I guess the other thing I would point out to one of questions of setting up our own system. We had the discussion once before Sean about the difficulty of negotiating with the owners of the polls that we're trying to get our lines put up on would be not willing to give us the kind same rate that they're willing to give us as a town for a town owned system, limited system. If we were also selling services and competition to them.
Correct. Yeah. So we're going, we're going on the polls in the municipal communication space, which is space that the select board got basically back, going back to when there were telegraph wires for fire alarms. It's been that the town has had the right to be up there, that part of the pole for essentially forever. And we can do that because we're using it for municipal use. If we were to start offering paid service over that, then we would, we would have to go back to the poll owners and we would have to get a license, a poll attachment license to be up there. So it's not to say that can't be done, but it's that part's involved. And then the other part, I believe on the financial side, essentially we'd have to create a municipal light plant, which is essentially a fancy enterprise fund. And that's a multi-year process. So, and again, not to say that it can't be done. It's, it's, uh, it's not quick or simple. The technical part's easy, but.
So there's nothing else, then I think we should get on to Shavina and and clerks and elections, but Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. When you can you unmute?
Hello. Hello, thank you. It was a little bit of a delay on, on muting the mic. How are, how is everyone?
Good. Hello.
Thank you for having me. So I'm here just to discuss our budget, so both the town clerk and our election budget. And so the town clerk, a lot has been going on, on both the town clerk and the election side. When we initially began preparing the budget in the beginning of the year, we had a lot of objectives and goals. And thanks to COVID, some of those we've been able to already accomplish. And so those are things that I wanted to highlight. First, I'd like to start by saying that I have an amazing staff who has been resilient during the shutdown. They've been here. We've been in office throughout the shutdown. We began working a staggered shift. So they would come in for half days and I would work opposite of Suwadette, who was our assistant town clerk, so that we would have management coverage all day. So we were here every day so that business would be as usual as it could be and so that there would be no laps in services provided to the community. We were able to process all of our dog licenses on time. We were able to still process mobile registrations. Still able to process vital records. And part of the reason we had to be in office is because to process vital records and close registration, those are state systems that we don't have access to remotely. And so we were able to still come in and get that work done. And so it allowed us an opportunity to focus on some of those vital aspects of the town clerk's job. While we were in shutdown, we were able to make progress. We partnered with IT and with our county treasurer and we were able to roll out online e-payment that went into effect on July first. So now we are able to accept dog license renewals and vital record requests online. And so that's a great accomplishment. It was something that I remember. I originally had interviewed for the town clerk position in twenty eighteen and Jen LaFountain was on the recruitment team then, and that was a question that she asked me. So Jen, I remember that question. She asked me, do you all do online dog licenses in the municipality that I came from? And so I told her, I said, if you, if I'm offered the position, we'll make it happen. So we made it happen in twenty twenty. And so that's a great accomplishment that I am proud of. Now some things that have changed and without jumping ahead is in our election side. Maybe many of you know, or you don't know, there's been an extensive amount of legislation that was put forth during the spring in response to COVID. I was fortunate enough to work alongside State Rep Dome and Senator Comerford to go over the legislation, offer feedback and give some insight on what I felt would be beneficial or detrimental to the town clerk's department in regards to elections. And so the bills went into conference committee on the last week of June and made it to the governor on last weekend. So the bill was signed on last Monday. So we have a lot of work to do in a short amount of time. And so I've been in conversation, Paul and I have been in conversation as well as Sean and I regarding how we're going to move forward to respond with elections in this season and in this climate.
Okay, questions? Mandy and let's start with you and then Mary Lou.
Thank you. I have two questions. They're both related not to elections. And one is dog licenses. Our enforcement of dog licenses sits in the police department. I'm curious why the issuance of them sits in the town clerk's office instead of sort of at the public safety office? Why is there that split between who enforces them and who issues them? And then the other one was on page thirty seven of the budget book for the town clerk's office where you list your service levels. Conflict of interest law compliance service levels in FY eighteen were seventy five and in FY nineteen were five hundred and eighty four. And I just wanted to, I, why is it so high? Is that something that we're actually enforcing it or what, what happened?
So to answer your first question, so dog licenses by MGL are, are a responsibility of the town clerk. So that's why. And so we have the police enforce it for late fees. And because sometimes, you know, you need a little extra muscle to get five dollars. And as far as the, the increase on the conflict of interest, all municipal employees, state and municipal employees have to do the conflict of interest every other year. And so for the town, it looks like it was in two thousand nineteen. So the town does it in odd numbered years. So no one, only new employees would have done it in twenty eighteen versus in twenty nineteen. So in twenty nineteen, everyone had to go through conflict of interest training. And so we retain those records. So once you go through, it's an online training and you get your certificate, you have to submit it to the town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mary Lou.
Hey, this is an election question. With university and colleges, some of them doing all online classes, some the combination. We know in a presidential election year that many of these students vote locally, register locally. Is there any plan or thought about, about that happening here in Amherst and how you'd handle that? And I, I do know a little bit about the plan that the legislature set up, but I guess how, how are we dealing, how are we going to deal with that? Because it's clear that all these students will not be back as they have been in the past during a presidential election year.
So it is something that I have thought of. It's something that I started planning back in May. And so one of the things that I'm advocating for all of our college students as well as anyone who would be in an at risk population, I'm advocating vote by mail. Because for a number of reasons, for safety, these are number one. Also, the part of the change in the legislation is the state is going to pick up the postage bill for us being able to mail out the request form. So the secretary of state as of July first is going to mail out a twenty twenty vote by mail application to request the ballot to every registered voter statewide. And it's going to be posted eight so that all they have to do, all voters have to do is complete it and mail it back. It'll come to us directly. So to be addressed to the town hall, we will process it. And so when we receive their ballot, I mean, excuse me, when we receive their application and we receive the ballot, we'll mail it to them. And the postage is going to be paid on that as well. And so that's an incentive because you hear a lot of times that it costs sometimes, depending on the weight of the ballot, it can cost anywhere from a dollar to a dollar fifty to mail the ballot out and to receive it back. And so that's the, one of the plans that I have in place. Some others are forthcoming that I don't want to talk about right at this moment, out of respect. And it'll be on your agenda for next week's meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Follow up Andy?
Yes.
How are we going to know that these students haven't applied, not only in their campus residence, but in their local home? How is that going to be checked so that we can avoid people voting twice?
So in the state of Massachusetts, our voter registration information system is a statewide system that prohibits duplication. So when someone registers to vote in one community, if they're registered already in another community, it'll take them off the roll in the community where they are.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lynn.
Yeah, I actually want to just reemphasize something that Shavina said, and that is she is on the agenda on Monday, the twentieth to talk about the upcoming election and her plans. And so for issues that are not budget related, we can take them up then.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Dorothy?
I'll wait for, I'll wait for Monday.
Okay, sounds fair enough. Anything else from any members of the committee? Mary Lou, yes, hands is down. So anything else? I thank you very much for the presentation and welcome to, you know, it's really been great to have you and now that you're, now you're a veteran of Amherst.
Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure.
This is great working with you and looking forward to continuing to work with you. So I think that we're at the end for general government, except for one section, and that is the facilities maintenance. And I guess my question to either Sean, do we have anybody? Maybe Sean, do we have anyone here for that section?
I thought we did that one quickly last week when Jeremiah and Rob were here. I think we did that one quickly.
So the only thing we have left is debt service?
Yeah.
General government, I mean, general services.
Okay, yeah, after facilities, right, there's.
Okay, the general services, look for that. And then what I was going to suggest so that we can get to public comment is that is that we put debt ser, just continue debt service into the next meeting.
I had sent the grid that showed the things that we needed to get through today that were highlighted in yellow. And on that, the retirement assessment and the regional, and the OPEB is on there, but we had already talked about that and voted that in the one-month budget, but we have to resend the one-month budget in order to put this one in place. So I didn't know if you wanted to bring that up again, so I highlighted that. But there's debt service, and there was also the optional tax exemption that we have to accept every year.
Yeah.
As well. And I sent all that information in my email to everybody.
I'm just keeping an eye on the, on the clock and recognizing that we put in an extra meeting this week and so that we could, if there was any last pieces that we could put over for tomorrow, we may actually have more time and be able to hear from any members of the public who are still seeking recognition.
This should be quick.
Oh, several different topics. But anything on General Services, let's cover that for sure.
I can run through that one real quick, Sonya, and if you want to chime in. That area has our liability insurance, our professional insurance, property insurance, some other general, again, it is General Services, so it's things that cover a lot of departments like postage and telephones, the audit, equipment maintenance. The big increase you see there, the 32.9%, that's what we talked about earlier, where we moved legal from its own section into this section. I think that accounts for just about the majority of that increase, right, Sonya?
Yep.
And so, yeah, this is sort of a, you know, operational section of the budget. There's not a lot of goals here.
In the legal services, isn't it, if I recall, I don't have it right in front of me, it's not an increase from the prior year. It's just moved from its own section.
Right, yep.
All the budgeted, yes.
Okay, Kathy? Did you?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on page 45, the vehicles insured. Is that number of vehicles that are just part of general government, you know, on, whose vehicles are those? Is what I, or are those all the vehicle, I mean, is that vehicles, fire engine and every vehicle we have in town?
That's just, that's all of them, and that'll be actually part of the capital improvement program as well. That's one, the area where we pull our vehicle information is from what's insured. And Holly or Sonya may know, it may also include some things that aren't necessarily what you would consider a vehicle as well, some equipment that has to be insured.
Okay. That was, that was my question. So, so when Guilford told us that he has 110, he's about half of all the vehicles.
Schools have 20 or 30, the police and fire that are in that number, so it includes all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Dorothy?
Just a real quick one, since they're all here, I want to say that this budget book is absolutely a miracle. A regular person can read it and understand it, and I have no idea how much work it took to make this book, but I really, really appreciate it. So thank you to you all.
Thank, thank Holly and Sonya. Holly's hair was not purple at the beginning of this process, and by the end of the budget book, there you go.
Gray.
Okay, well, thank you to all of you too for the book. So you had brought up several topics, Sonya, and is there really a reason why we can't just hold it for tomorrow at this point?
Um.
Are you gonna?
That's fine. I mean, debt service is pretty simple. It is our debt service, and we kind of see that all the time. So I don't know if there's a lot of questions on our debt service. It's going down until we start building these buildings.
Or we borrow money and then it goes up.
Right.
No, I think the question that, the one question I had had Lynn ask the other day on, it looked like you must have refinanced, because the interest rates went down on some of the things compared to last year's budget book, and I think you said you had done that.
We don't refinance, but we have a lot of bands out there right now, bond anticipation notes. So that changes every year, and sometimes we don't have an interest rate when we're putting the budget book together. Sometimes we do. So when we are estimating it, we ask our financial advisor, and he tells us four or 5% because we don't know where we're going from here, so. That'll fluctuate. Once they're permanently bonded, if we permanently bond all of them, which we probably won't, then it becomes a permanent number. But we don't refinance very often unless there's, unless there's going to be savings to a lower interest rate, which hasn't really been the case for a lot of years, because interest rates have been so low.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Dorothy, did you think debt service? Dorothy? You're muted.
No, I hadn't taken my hand down. I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. The other subjects you were gonna, you bring your optional tax thing. Those are pieces you put into the packet?
Yes. It was three. It was the attachment three and 3.1. Three is the actual order, and 3.1 was a memo from our assessor, Liz, explaining what our exemptions were for last year.
Why don't we hold that for tomorrow? And does, is everybody in the, since there was some confusion earlier, make sure that if you haven't looked into the packet for today's meeting, that you do so and look at those documents before we have the discussion? Because some people had missed the question and the answers, because they didn't realize that they were in the posted packet, and I will send out a note after the meeting explaining that and where to find the packet if you haven't been able to find it. Or unless you want to cover it, because it looks like Liz is still here.
I'm here to answer the questions on the local option exemptions that she's discussing if we need to.
Okay. Actually, let me see if I, do you have it available to show on the screen? Or, oops, I just, I accidentally ran into a problem. Do you have it available, or shall I look for it?
I have one that has a question mark with a base for the FYI, but I don't know if we ever found a solution, but I can share this document that I have in front of me. I believe it's the one that I submitted to you, Sonya.
We should, you can do it too.
I have it in front of me, but I have the one with the question mark for the base on the F, the fiscal year for the base.
Who has control to share, Sean?
Are you looking for the approval order that has the local exemption? I can bring that on the screen.
It would be personal exemptions fiscal year 2020. The reimbursement would be in fiscal 21. These are local additional exemptions. I can share the one I have, basically. It's the same.
Donna, it's good to see you mailed you three and 3.1.
You have a chance, or?
You said you just emailed it to me, Sonya, and we pull it.
It's got to you and Paul.
Is it, it's CO number three?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can pull that up. Let me, let me share the first one and then tell me if that's it.
And then the second one is 3.1.
Is there a place in particular we're supposed to be looking at for the shared? Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. I've been the sharer, not the sharing.
That's the council order.
The next, it's the next one, Sean. Three, well, next one.
Yeah. Exactly.
Documents, there was a next document that's labeled 3.1 FY.
Let me get that one.
That's the one.
All right.
It's the only Word document in that email.
Is this, is it up on the screen right now?
Nope.
Um, huh.
The Word document.
You guys aren't seeing it on the screen?
Not with saying your email.
Let me.
Any emails?
Let me try it again.
Switch screens, Sean, maybe?
Do you see it now?
There you go.
Yep, yep. That's basically what I'm looking at. Okay. So basically, what you're looking at there is the optional exemptions allowed by MGL to add an additional exemption to the existing exemptions they mandate by the state. And the town of Amherst has option for additional surviving spouses, veteran, and disabled, and surviving parents of a son or daughter killed in action, or a spouse, surviving spouse of a husband or wife killed in action, legally blind and senior. And the senior regulations are pretty in-depth, so I won't go into them too much. But those are available if anybody's interested. I hope to get out to some of our local organizations to expand on these exemptions that are offered only in the town of Amherst, from these local options, to our local organizations for seniors and veterans. Basically, we're looking at a local option exemption of 108, 971. Am I correct, Sonya?
Sorry.
The, the local options in total are 108, 971. Great sounds. And then the state will reimburse us $33,338 of that amount, and the rest is supported by the community. So our local option portion, you know, we add an additional $39,000, almost $40,000.
See if I can explain it correctly, just to make it, for people who are unfamiliar with the process, the base exemption amount is required. The optional piece is a local option that can add to the amount. Town meeting over the years has always adopted the local option, so that we can provide the benefit that extends permissible. Even though it does reduce our taxation by that amount, it's a valid, it has always been deemed to be a valid expenditure. And, but it has to be voted annually. And I think I stated it correctly, Sonya?
Yeah.
So I think that we basically are going to be asked again to do this, and this has, this is the assessor's role. His value, made the estimates of the value that, of the local exemption that we would have to vote on to continue to offer them to the veterans and legally blind and seniors who are eligible. Questions? Have to go back to the participant list and see if there are any questions. And Lynn?
I assume this is not the same as the program where seniors can work to up to a certain amount to have their taxes reduced?
No, that is not included in this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to, can I, can I say something, Andy? Attachments, that's labeled number three. That is the actual order. But the second page of that is the last year's memo from David Burgess, so ignore that second page. I'll send it out with, without that page.
Okay.
This every year, so I didn't notice David's attached to it.
Okay, so you'll reset, you'll.
Right.
You'll replace the packet.
I'll replace it with Liz's.
Okay, great. Dorothy?
I'm having trouble reading it, so let's take the first one. Does X, is that six people? Going to get that amount?
X means accounts.
Accounts, okay.
Okay. What this stands for is this MGL chapter 53 is a section of the law that allows us to, or the chapter of the law that allows us to offer these. This is the specific subsection for each of these.
So, so I don't know how much it really is then, because if six people get a total of 3,400, so I divide six into that and I come out to about $500?
Each, yes.
They get five, okay. So the huge amount for the veterans is that there's 50 people dividing up $58,000. And so they're going to get maybe like $800 or something like that.
Right. We're not talking a large amount of money, but it is significant to those in this vulnerable population that could really use the assistance.
Okay, I thank you. I just need a little clarification.
Not at all.
We would be voting on the optional.
Portion of it, right, to continue the optional additional exemption.
Okay. So that answers your question, Dorothy?
It does.
So do we want to, actually, let's hold, hold off and hold all motions till the next two meetings. But the motion that would be, was, is whether or not to again offer the optional local exemption and whether to recommend that action to the council.
I'd like to take a minute to recognize my assistant, Teresa Alzarna. She's not with me today. She's actually having eye surgery. It's pretty dramatic for her. And she's been administrating and coordinating those efforts for all those benefit programs for our very needy individuals in the community. And she's been really great. I gotta say, I haven't been here all that long, but she's been very patient and she's really very efficient. I'd like to put a shout out there.
I wish her well on our behalf and thank her for.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see anything else unless, Dorothy, you still have your hand up. Was that vested before? Mary Lou, you have something, you just?
Could we, are we off of debt?
Yes, we're.
I had a question.
Back to that if you want.
Yes, I do have one on, it's on page 179. And I may not be understanding this correctly. It's Appendix D. The East Street School renovations, we're still paying on a $700,000 bond. And I thought at some point we stopped work on that school because the elevator was going to be expensive and, and all of the codes and everything. And we're still paying on that. It looks like into the future also.
I can answer that. The reason it's labeled the East Street School is because that's where we originally borrowed the funds under, but we had repurposed a lot of that debt for other projects that happened through the town. So we used that money that was borrowed for other projects. We had revotes at town meeting for it, but it's still named East Street School, just so we can track that debt and that bond that we actually originally borrowed for.
Oh, good, because I just wonder if this building is standing there, and if we're still doing stuff with not a good idea.
No, we never went through with it.
So, other questions? That was a good question. Thank you. All right, so I think that we're then finished with general government, and we will vote on the whole series of issues at one time, including the optional exemptions, but we're not going to take the vote today. Since we have had some very patient attendees who we had notified for public comment. Lynn, can you put the agenda back on? Because it's, I think it had a statement about the public comment rules, and then I was going to. about the public comment rules, and then I was going to just try and go through and to, the public comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Finance Committee are allowed under general public comment, they're not limited to subjects that were discussed, but we welcome always public comment, and there are people who've been very patiently waiting for that opportunity. So what I'm going to do is go back in my own section and look at the participant list, and at this point, we have a fairly large number of people who have indicated that they would like to speak, and so I'm going to have to probably try and limit this, if I can, to, let's say, a minute and a half is what I'll try and do, I'm going to set a timer, and, but I would just ask you to introduce yourself and indicate that you're resident of Amherst by telling us at least what part of town you live in, what, of the council districts, and so I'm going to go in order, and if you spoke last night, and we took very careful notes, and so I urge you, I can't say, I'm not going to interrupt you, do, but please don't, try not to repeat from what you said last night. Anything else from the committee before I start the list? If not, Brian Monison Olsen, I believe is correct, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me.
Thank you, that was close. My name is Brian Monison Olsen, I am a resident of District Five in South Amherst. Thank you for, for letting me speak. I'm, I'm a parent and an educator in Amherst, and I've lived here for thirteen years now, and I'm trying to respond to some of the things that were said by the Police Department and, and the Fire Department, and I just want to urge the Town Council to carry out the demands put forward by Defund 413 and reduce the police budget by fifty-two percent. Police departments are historically racist organizations, and they don't meet the needs of our society at this point. As illustrated by their own statistics, over ninety, I think ninety-six percent of calls to the police are for nonviolent issues, and the police enforce the law with violence or the threat of violence. They have been asked continually to do more and more roles that they are not suited for in their training, and that has become a progressive problem that we need to address. We need to more intelligently distribute our tax dollars to provide the essential services that reduce crime and help communities flourish. Continued investment in violent law enforcement is backwards and really fails to consider the his, our history or the current moment. Amherst has eighteen times more police officers employed by the town than public health workers or social workers. There was some commentary on that we shouldn't be reducing our police force during a pandemic, we should be focused on public health. That's, that's the obvious solution here. As Chief Livingston noted, the high frequency of mental health calls, stating that it was roughly one-third of calls, and he said mental health assistance is often not available from other organizations. We need to fix that problem. When an officer shows up for a quote-unquote "warm knock" for someone who has been experiencing a mental health issue or a drug crisis, it's really well documented at this point that the presence of a uniformed officer with a gun, more often than not, is going to escalate that situation. We need to take a holistic, nonviolent approach to our future that redistributes our money in a way that acknowledges the painful lessons that have shown without a doubt that violent law enforcement is part of the problem and should be a thing of the past. I'm proud of Amherst, and I believe we can really move forward with a more intelligent and compassionate view of law enforcement and social well-being.
So please conclude.
Thank you for, for your attention.
Well, thank you. Kinga McCraven?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hi, I am Kinga McCraven, a queer black woman who graduated from Pelham Elementary School, Amherst Middle and High School, and UMass. I'm a local educator and community leader working to improve our culture here because I did not feel safe in any of those spaces. I was in awe last night of everyone who was brave enough to name their experiences and how our town upholds racist institutions such as the Police Department and School District. I was heartbroken to watch the council with mostly blank stares and lifeless expressions, especially when folks were sharing devastating examples of the harm they have experienced and witnessed in Amherst, which today I heard questioned and minimized. I did not speak last night because I feel unsafe speaking to this council of people who do not display passion or empathy and are not a true representation of our community, police and question the voices of their community and protect the racist institutions in our town. I feel this harm in my body and spirit and use immense strength to speak my truth to you today. I urge you to reflect on how it is possible that the town can combat systemic racism with zero-point-one percent of the entire budget. This is not about whether individuals are inherently good or not, but the gross funding to a racist institution who is responding to calls concerning the health and wellness of our community instead of addressing health head-on. We need to invest in the general wellness of our community and build up a public health and safety outside of the institutions that uphold systemic racism, rather than funding institutions that are not experienced with such issues. We suffer from a lack of access to safe spaces, mental health services, transportation, and essential human resources, which we, I do not see being addressed in this budget. There is a health, a food apartheid in this, in this town with no grocery stores that are accessible and inclusive, let alone offer affordable quality foods. I am board president of Common Share Food Co-op, which is working to create a space addressing this lack in Amherst while building an anti-racist, community-owned, and-led grocery store. I'm founder of Counter Culture Educator, where we help creative leaders turn around the culture of their community. These are only two examples of projects that truly address the health of our entire community, and the town needs to be committed to. We need a space owned and operated by black people specifically serving the black community. Just as this council has paid time to decide how to best uplift and support the town, black residents deserve the same treatment. There will be, there must be a thorough conversation between our black community and the town of Amherst with adequate time to assess and create a legitimate plan. Asking black commuters, community leaders to service this community for free is a continued violation of black livelihood. Cut the Amherst Police Department by fifty-two percent to directly improve the public health and safety in our town. Do not give any of this money to any institution such as the police or school district. Pay black community leaders to establish a task force to create a solid plan to adequately address the systemic racism.
Please finish up.
Give this task force of black community leaders the authority to direct the town on how to allocate further funds needed to support the plan to combat structural racism. Be responsible with this money by not rushing into this important decision and putting it in an interest-bearing account until a plan has been formulated. There is no quick fix to structural racism, we need to approach this with a long-term change in mind. This is absolutely possible, but only if the town chooses to be on the right side of history and stand against structural and institutionalized racism that thrives in Amherst.
Okay, please finish.
She did.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm trying to keep, make sure we have time for everybody. Somebody has signed on and is listed as counterculture educator, but I assume that there's somebody who's signed on that way, who can identify themselves, and please spell your last name, and introduce, where, tell us where you live in town.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here. My name is DW, I'm an Amherst elementary, middle, and high school graduate. I'm also a former employee of the Amherst School District, and I was tasked with establishing the inaugural restorative justice program. I've created and developed programs in Chicago and in Western Mass that speak to the power of transformational community approaches. I know that we cannot transform what we cannot see. Looking at this board, I have not observed adequate representation of the people that live in Amherst. I'm not just talking about race. I observed how this group attempted to use one black man's voice as if we are a monolith. I agree that we need public safety. Defunding the police will do just that. Public safety isn't only police. Public safety is empowering, paying, and training the community on transformational justice practices to make sure those around us are also safe. I am, I am public safety, and I take my job seriously. Ask John Manjano, he has personally experienced the tenacity and care in which I show up for my community. I shouldn't have to join the police force to be paid to take care of my community when I know there are alternative solutions outside of policing that work. In restorative justice, we uplift a saying, "How are the children?" And if we cannot all unequivocally say in unison that the children are well, we have a serious problem. Racism is a public health crisis. Structural racism in Amherst is a problem. This meeting structure is problematic and is an example of structural racism. The Police Department spoke for over an hour justifying their actions while the general public is policed on the length of our comments and our comment topics. Herein lies the problem. I know most, if not all of you, don't get that. That's why you also need community support. Defund the police by fifty-two percent so we can get the work of supporting a community we love.
Thank you for your comment. Hamil Karshavaz?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, um, yes, Hamil Karshavaz, I live in District Five, and I'm a proud employee of the University of Massachusetts, where we teach our students to be revolutionary, to think critically, question power, and above all, to be ambitious. Now, while I openly identify myself as someone who works and has his check signed by the University of Massachusetts, I don't react emotionally because you all had a discussion about actions going on to try to value the property and assess the property value to try to get more out of UMass in terms of payment in lieu of taxes. I don't go into a knee-jerk reaction like that because you're doing that as the town of Amherst, even though I'm a UMass employee. And likewise, I thought it very unhelpful and to this conversation to, and I can understand where he's coming from, Scott Livingston is his colleague, is his fellow chief, but you know, Tim, who identified himself as a black man and gave his personal focus, well, I'm a black man as well, and I don't, but I don't want to give my, go into my own personal thing here, I want to keep it on topic, I want to not go emotional, but I have to respond right now to say that to reduce this to people are just acting emotionally because of the eight minutes and forty-six seconds tape of George Floyd, or we're reacting emotionally because of some animus for the police, that's nowhere in this conversation. I liked my chief, I have, Chief Livingston is, my interactions have been very positive, but the real question here is about being revolutionary, thinking critically, questioning power, being ambitious, and looking at this moment as an opportunity to begin to reassess and rethink the budget. I don't give a particular percentage, I'm not going to sign on here to fifty-two percent, maybe it's a hundred, but we've got to start the process now of thinking about the functions, of thinking about where we can involve and validate and, and create programs like a cahoots or something that can begin to put people in front of unarmed people, putting unarmed, trained people who are appropriate for those circumstances in front of unarmed people. Of course, where there's a violent threat, yes, you need, you need a force that can deal with that, but we are too militarized, there's too much of a focus on militarism and on a warrior culture in all police departments that we, it's time for us to rethink our dependence on that. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Shabazz. Rick Last?
Hello, everybody. Yeah, it's, it's really, it's really hard after waiting all day, and I echo what other people said, and I have minutes to share after, you know, so much time was given, you know, to the, the police, which seemed to be a lot of the repeat of the earlier Town Council's police call, so this, this whole process seems really wrong, kind of antithetical to participation. So the defund campaign is about systematic patterns of racism in the Amherst Police Department. You're right, no one has been, you know, murdered by the police in Amherst, but did you really hear the testimonies last night about people's experience? Does that matter? It was a key point made by the speakers, and in my opinion, was virtually dismissed today. Ms. Friedman called the Amherst Police Department above par in reference to responses to mental and public health, but above par, I don't know what that means, it usually doesn't win any tournaments, but still, we're going, we still need to go back to the statement that Captain Young was talking about, we are not clinicians, we don't pretend to be, this is not our job. So if, if you, you listed a great set of resources, and they should be used, all these social agencies and resources, but they should be used at the point of the crisis, that only makes sense. The crisis is now for these people, and the police do not need to show up, as so many people said, and I'll repeat the, the statistics from the cahoots program, seventeen thousand calls were rerouted to cahoots, and one percent, less than one percent, required any kind of police presence or police calls. That is really important to, to think about. So it's our job to do best for the community, and that is what's best for the community. With a police officer showing up, too many things go wrong. At the very least, pass only a one-month budget and spend that month paying a collection of BIPOC folks to give you the answers that you need around the budget, especially the police budget. Let's take a deeper look, that's the least.
Thank you very much, Rick Last. A number of people had their hands up, and then all of a sudden, geared off of my.
Yeah, that, that was my fault, sorry, this, Sean, I, I hit the lower all hands button by accident, so anybody who had their hands up, I, or just going to have to raise them again, I'm terribly sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, so we can, because I, unfortunately, I take them in order that they were up previously, now some, I'm seeing some hands that had been, of people who have been previously recognized in today's meeting, and I ask you, if you've been recognized, wants to please not ask again, it's, let's work with a honor system, but Lynn, have you been keeping track of the people, of the names?
I do, I have, but I think you should start with the top of the list, it's about all you can do at this point.
Okay, if you've identified anyone who's already spoken, then please somehow let me know, but Zoe Crabtree, I know we heard from you last night, but not today, please. Unmute. Okay, Zoe, I think you can go.
Awesome, thank you so much, Andrew. As you said, I did speak last night, I live in District Five, I just wanted to share some information, and I think you'll be very interested in about the officer-initiated calls and the follow-up calls. Like I shared yesterday, we have all access to all of the call logs that we downloaded from the Amherst Police website, and we were able to put them into a spreadsheet format so that they're very easily queried. By look at the number of, of police calls that were initiated by the police, the initiated calls that you were speaking about earlier, there are four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two of them total. Only seven hundred and sixty-nine of them, fifteen percent, are follow-up calls. So I think that there were, there was some conversation earlier about, well, maybe most of the calls that are listed as officer-initiated are really just follow-up, and so they're skewing the numbers, and that doesn't bear out in my analysis of the data, it looks like follow-up calls, at least the way that they're tagged in your system, under the call reason, not the call type, it's only fifteen percent of those officer-initiated calls. The call, the rest of the officer-initiated calls seem to be much more of this active policing that, that. that, that use all of the council frame as something that's really positive. But what you should be hearing from what everyone has been telling you the last night and today is that that active policing is really harmful. And when people say violence, they don't necessarily mean, you know, someone taking out a gun and shooting them. They mean, like, being watched, being perceived as suspicious, being overpoliced in, in everything that you're doing, having that, having that be looked at more than anyone else. That is violence, and that's what everyone is speaking to here. And that bears out in, in the data about officer-initiated calls. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Carrie Mullen.
Hi, similar to what Zoe was saying, I'm a town resident. I live on Northeast Street. I did the maps for the data analysis that you can find at, at defund four one three Amherst, or, sorry, I can't remember, I'm nervous, the Instagram account that you've all been sent. And I just redid the data. I dropped all follow-up calls from the data and just looked at the initiated calls in the same exact places are lighting up as being more proactively policed. And please listen to the BIPOC who are saying that being proactively policed harms them. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person I see is, if I don't get your name right, pronounced right, please speak up. NJ Revillas, please join us.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, NJ, it stands for Nicole Jessica. I live at thirty-six Hulse Road in Amherst, and I teach at Holyoke High School. I don't think I've ever noticed a police car or officer in my neighborhood, which is Precinct Eight, which is predominantly white. As a teacher, of course, my bias is for funding schools, school counselors, more teachers, especially during the pandemic. I'm really glad to hear that our police are mental health first aid and CIT-trained. I'm actually a certified trainer with Youth Mental Health First Aid, and it's a great program. But I'm not really sure why we're training police to do mental health work instead of hiring psychology specialists to intervene and support in a crisis. Why can't healthcare providers be first responders? Why is a drug addiction response team run by police and not EMTs? We need a hiring freeze and general defunding for the Amherst Police Department. I would love to see our tax dollars supporting things like education, food justice, housing, access to healthcare, all sorts of non-police town services. Expanding public internet access sounds like a great place to invest as a town, especially municipal fiber, which was discussed today. I'm really hoping that Amherst will be a leader in solutions for policing and community services. Thank you for your time and consideration. I really hope that you listen to the black people in our community on this issue.
Thank you very much. Keeping, moving along, Alexandra Monison Olsen.
Yeah, she already spoke.
That's what I thought.
As well as a couple of other folks who've spoken again today, but I did speak last night, yeah.
I believe a partner or someone else in her household may have spoken, but not.
My, my partner spoke earlier, Brian.
So you haven't spoken today?
No, I have not.
So please join us, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. So I am Lexi Monison Olsen. I've lived in Amherst for thirteen years. I live in District Five, represented by Councilors Dumont and Ball Milne. I have two children who go to Cocker Farm and a third who will attend when they're old enough. I wanted to first clarify in the beginning of my statement that the words you heard last night were absolutely about the local police department and policing situation, not a knee-jerk response to the national condition. The statements being made are based on facts pulled from your data, your budget, your published documents, and bolstered by firsthand experience. You need to be realistic about the very strong community response that you're seeing to this budget and this police department. More specifically, I would like to talk about the indication that you work with organizations in the area, such as the fire department, to determine appropriate services in a given situation when a call comes in. Only about twelve percent of calls are, that are responded to by the police department actually come from a nine-one-one call. Forty-four percent are initiated by the cops themselves. And while you indicated earlier today that what we refer to as patrolling as follow-up, according to your own statistics, this only accounts for fifteen percent of the police-initiated calls. This is not problem stabilization. This is patrolling and instigating, and I do not feel as though this policing helps to keep our town and community safe, especially considering that different parts of our community are policed differently. You say that a hundred percent of your officers are required to be trained in mental health first aid, but you could not possibly handle a mental health crisis as well as a mental health professional. Why does the town not employ crisis intervention response teams rather than police officers to respond in these situations? We budget for forty-eight officers, but only two public health workers and two social workers. In fact, the social services budget has been reduced from eighty thousand dollars in two thousand eighteen to twenty thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen and zero for twenty twenty. I understand that decisions need to be made, and the budget is tight this year, but clearly, social services are not what need to be cut. Armed officers are generally not needed in a mental health crisis, and they often, as we heard in public testimony last night, scare people, make them anxious, and escalate situations. I'm also hearing you say that many of the calls you respond to are not service calls, but rather harm reduction calls. Why do we need police officers for these calls at all? Why are we investing resources in providing trainings for armed officers rather than recruiting and incorporating educators, mental healthcare workers, and others to provide the actual services that are needed? I agree that public health and safety are crucial, Julie, but we do not need harm reduction responses from armed police officers. We need community services that support all Amherst residents to live healthy, safe lives. The police do not provide this. Above par is not an appropriate standard. We need to devote financial resources to services in the town that will actually provide safety and reflect the values we claim to have. Mr. Bockelman, if you feel as though the town has not had sufficient time to have these conversations, then I challenge the council to pass another one month, one-month budget to allow for that time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So Michelle.
Hi there.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Yep, hi, my name is Michelle, and I live in District One. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking today to share a personal experience. I've been living in Amherst since nineteen ninety-eight. I married a man who also lives in Amherst, and I'm now divorced from him. But he is extremely mentally ill, and so I have worked closely with the Amherst Police Department over the years to manage the situation. I do want to be very clear that I believe that systemic racism is alive and well, not only, you know, globally, nationally, and in Amherst. I also believe that overpolicing is harmful. But I just want to point out that when it comes to the particulars of these situations and seeing my ex-husband and the father of my two children basically become sick in front of our eyes. And I, I want to say that the Amherst Police Department has been extremely compassionate. And, you know, not perfect by any means, but I have found them to be extremely compassionate. But he has, just like in the month of February, there were twenty calls just for him for disturbing the peace. And, you know, they go out there and they, they check in with him, and they take him over to, you know, North Hampton to be evaluated. And he gets, you know, he comes back the next day, and it is a very, very difficult situation for everybody involved. My children, you know, after George Floyd's brutal murder, my children asked me if that was gonna happen to their dad. And I, there is nothing in my heart that believes anything like that with the Amherst Police Department at all. But the reality is, is that the frustration is extreme. And I do very, very, very strongly believe that they need the support of specialized mental health professionals to do their job better and to support our community better. You know, I've been on the other side of things where I've had a restraining order against him and where maybe the police did overpolice, I don't know, but maybe they did, drive by a bunch and just kind of keep their eyes on things. And, and for me, that did provide some sense of safety for myself and my children. So I think we're kind of all, in some ways, I think we might be saying some of the same things in that, you know, the, the police need more help in these circumstances. And they need not, you know, it's wonderful that they're trained, as I think Lexi said, but they need specialized professionals. If my ex-husband had a professional show up.
Train, train.
Sorry. Yep, that's, that's basically it. I really believe that if some money was, if, if this was frozen until a larger conversation could happen, and if there was money that was set aside in some sort of account or something like that, instead of, you know, just rushing into a decision, I believe that would benefit the community greatly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Somebody has signed on with an indication of peace and love. And so whoever you are, please.
Hello, it's my turn.
Tell us your name and where you live.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, first of all, I hope that I'm finding you all in good health and in good spirits. My name is Jose Adosta, and I'm an advocate for your local homeless in North Hampton and Amherst. And I lived right on the border of Amherst and Palmer for two and a half years. I have a family of seven. And I specifically elected to send my kids out of the Amherst school system when you had police officers in it. And so I just want to say that I'm coming here with the voice of the first people. And I want to remind you that you're trying to deny that there's systemic racism in a town that's named after a guy who spreads smallpox and blankets to Native American communities. So I think that it'd be really wise for you to remember that. And remember that there's no Native American people here for a reason. It's because you prospered off of their death. And now, the people that you have oppressed afterwards are uprising, they're rising. Black people need protection. I would like to really thank the, I believe his name was Tim, Chief Tim Nelson, I believe, for his testimony. And I would like to say that I have family, and even in Amherst, that's the cop, that they're cops, and they do a lot of good work. But this is that thing about, you know, one or two people that are doing really good work doesn't make up for this system where the roots are corrupted. I want to remind you that most of crime is monitored, knowingly monitored. And I come from a family that suffered from incarceration and oppression. I'm from Puerto Rico, and we've been being oppressed for over five hundred years. Okay, the police there have sold their allegiance to local drug dealers so that not even the inhabitants of the island can have any peace because they're protected by not only the police, but the CIA. And this is your drug war, okay? This is what Reagan started and the CIA started. And for some reason, you people don't want to take any responsibility for it. But indigenous people all over the world are suffering, and, and you're, you're brushing it off. I, I need to recommend a couple of things to you. The voice of the first people, real quick. Yes, sir, thank you very much. You need to double the amount of meetings that you have, and you need to stop making people wait to talk about this. You need to prioritize the racial aspects of all of this because human life is being lost all over the US territories. And everyone will remember you as delaying in combating that. I am an educator. I have traveled all over the world to teach art and music and love and healing. And I will teach of you people, and I hope that you behave in a way that I can teach positively of you. Please open your ears and your heart to a new future filled with imagination and brilliance that your community is bringing you. And don't turn them down. You should be employing the people that are coming here so they can show you and they can lead the way. God bless you and good health to you.
Thank you very much. Somebody who has, who's calling in and four, three, zero, four is part of their phone number, I believe. And I welcome you, and I see, please identify yourself and where you live and what's on your mind. Can you, you hear me?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead and tell us who you are and where you live and what you have to say.
Yes, thank you. My name is Kazit Kaya Nikosi. I live in District Five, and I'm sharing today, after listening last night and this morning, I'm disturbed but not surprised at how public comment has been limited when the police were given over an hour today. The people are asking you as a council to do what you agreed to do, to represent our needs. And right now, those needs are not a response to the national conversation. It is demeaning and dehumanizing to imply that our sharing is some sort of unfounded hysteria. It is clear that our town residents have experienced police profiling and violence here in Amherst. This local problem is urgent and life-threatening, even more so because of the added impact of COVID. I am asking that the town council act in line with the will of the people rather than to the will of the town manager or police department. In so doing, to answer the people, I ask that the town council create another one-month budget and convene a residence council for racial justice and equity with Black, Indigenous, and people of color as paid members to advise the council and the town manager on the budget moving forward. There are more than enough community members ready and willing to serve in this capacity, as you have seen last night and today. As my eight-year-old has been with me, listening last night and today for many hours, I shared that it is not that you all are bad people. It is that you are unable to admit that you've made a mistake and to commit to doing something different. So in the words of my eight-year-old, please admit that you've done something wrong. It's okay, just do something now about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Is it Alicia Descharnes? I think I have it right, but if I'm not, please correct me.
Hi, my name is Alicia Descharnes. You're very close. I'm a resident of District Two. Someone last night said that cutting the police department budget by fifty-two percent would make that budget unbalanced. But we already spend so much more per resident on the police department, almost a hundred and thirty-six dollars, than the library, sixty-nine dollars, public health, only three dollars and seventy-seven cents, a senior center, five dollars and eighty-nine cents, and veteran services, only seven dollars and forty-two cents. Social services budget has been reduced from eighty K in two thousand eighteen to twenty K in two thousand nineteen to zero dollars for twenty twenty. We need to pay attention to how we're spending our money and make sure we're putting it where our mouth is, where we say that our towns, what we say that our town stands for. You all have the opportunity to do that. You're in positions of power. You get to make decisions about this budget. The police spent time today making arguments that they are good people. It's not what we're arguing about. We're talking about the budget and where town finances go. Please take that into consideration and hear the voices of people who have spoken today, particularly the people of color who have taken time to share and educate this, this group. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Creek House.
Yeah. So I'm probably gonna be really short. I talked yesterday. I wanted to talk specifically on the mental health thing because that directly affects me as I spent four years prior to living in Amherst in facilities. And I have never once seen police involvement that hasn't escalated the situation. And like, I, like, there's not perfect solutions to those issues, but there's basically anything but the police is better. I don't see any reason why we should be funding the police to help people when that's not their job. And I am also asking for defunding the. And I am also asking for defunding the police. I'm asking for 52%. And I really hope you listen to the people who are talking and that, like, these people are real. There's been people who are saying that, um, like, these things don't happen, but we've heard testimonies from people who say there is racial profiling. And to not listen to that is just disrespectful. And really proves that you are in a position where you don't have to listen. And I'm just urging you to care. And really, that's it. And then thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Kauts. I appreciate your comments. Uh, Lauren, uh, please identify yourself and where you live and, uh, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Uh, my name is Lauren Reinhold. I'm a former resident of Amherst, but I've worked in the Center of Amherst for 10 years and maybe a future resident as I just graduated nursing school and will hopefully be working in the community in that respect wherever a job will take me. Um, and, and so that's where I come to you with this from. In nursing school, we learn the code of ethics. And what it teaches us is that we have a responsibility to reduce health disparities and address social inequity. And this, this is right in front of us. Pouring money into the police department is not what makes or keeps our community safe and inclusive and connected and engaged and to build community that can count on having the basics of its hierarchy of needs met is what's going to make Amherst the safest. To that end, I'm asking that you reinvest 52% of the police budget in creating a more community-based public safety process. Folks with mental health issues are actually much more likely to be the victims of violent crimes than to commit them. And yet, the way that the policing works out, they end up getting hurt by the system that is meant to protect them. I just spent two years, including 72 hours behind a lockboard, and I barely feel competent to serve these most vulnerable members of our community. I, I can't imagine for the life of me that, that the police training that they receive, and, and to be fair, I do not know about, about the exact certification that they receive, gives them what they need to do that. Um, I heard something in the call that, that the police specifically said they felt like they were getting railed against. It's not, it's not what's happening. Again, we're talking about the budget. We're talking about the distribution of services. Massachusetts is having a mental health crisis. We're losing psychiatric beds left and right. So if there's money to be spent, why don't we spend it more directly taking care of these folks that need it instead of spending it on a service that doesn't serve them? Um, and again, to that end, I think that 52% of the budget would be better served, um, directed by the BIPOC community, community leaders to be invested in their businesses and their community. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Casey Owen, is it, do I have that correct?
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct. Hi, um, I, I did speak last night. Um, today I'd like to read a statement put forth by a disabled Black person that who lives in Amherst and wishes to remain anonymous. Um, they asked us to share that they have faced numerous instances of targeted intimidation from members of the Amherst Police Department. They have faced abuse from an officer in the area who used his ties to APD to gain information and harass people he has abused. For this specific person, the harassment from APD has looked like unfounded wellness checks and officers showing up at their friends' places of residence without clear reason. APD has never taken accountability for this behavior. This person and others who have experienced, who had experiences similar to, similar to theirs have been told by officers that they're exaggerated their experiences and only looking to ruin the police department's credibility. But what this anonymous community member wants is safety, for their well-being to be taken seriously and for town accountability for their employees' behavior, both on and off the job. As we go through the process of defunding APD and reducing our reliance on police, on policing in Amherst, we also have to turn our attention to police accountability to ensure the immediate and present safety of community members with marginalized identities whose experiences need to be taken seriously. This community member has the following questions for the, for the town council and APD to consider. We know that we can't get answers to these questions here, but these questions are aimed at ways for APD to be held accountable to keep, to keeping all people in Amherst safe, rather than continuing to inflict violence on the same people it claims to be protecting. What will be put in place to ensure survivors and marginalized people are not being harassed by police? How is the town going to ensure marginalized people and survivors are not treated as the suspect if they need to ask for help from police? Who do, who do we as town people get, go to when the police are doing illegal things but are big on protecting their own? What types of training and accountability processes are going to ensure police treat people appropriately? How do we get cases in, how do we get cases involving injustice at the police, especially when it comes to bias and discrimination, looked at by an independent third party to assess and adequately hold APD accountable? I'm asking that you cut the police budget by 52% because the APD targets BIPOC people in Amherst. This racism can, cannot be reformed away, which is why we are asking that the 80K set aside in the budget for combating structural racism to the police department instead be spent in a community-directed way guided by, but guided by compensated Black-led organizations and community members and to place freezes on hiring and funding the APD. At the very least, only pass a one-month budget and spend that month paying a collection of BIPOC folks to give you the answers that you need on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, so I'm gonna, um, that concludes public comment at this point. And so, thank you very much. I'm gonna say one thing and then see if the council president, uh, has anything to add. But, uh, last night, we had a budget hearing and the, um, hearing was solely focused, uh, except for a couple-minute introduction to set the stage, to hearing comments from the public. And I think that all of us really appreciated the comments we heard. There's, uh, we, I assure you that I was listening and, um, listened again today to the comments that were received. We're, um, engaged in the process going forward. We're trying to hear from all parties. This was a finance committee hearing and the finance committee has the responsibility of, um, trying to understand the budget as proposed by the, um, departments and what, um, they propose to provide. We then evaluate that information. That was the purpose of today's meeting. Steps going forward, um, on this issue will, um, largely turn back to the full council and not be within the committee. But we really did appreciate having your comments since we will have to make a, uh, budget recommendation to the council. A council will make the budget decisions. Lynn, um, as president, do you have anything to add?
A couple of things, yes. Uh, just as we asked last night and several people have followed through. If you would, please share your written comments, um, with us by emailing them to towncouncil@amherstma.gov. They have been insightful, they've been informative. All of us have come to this meeting and have learned a lot in the process. And we want to thank you for making those comments and we would like them in addition to being part of this recorded meeting, as well as last night's recorded meeting, to be on the record in writing as well.
Uh, anything else, Lynn? Otherwise, I think we need to turn back to the committee business really quickly. I think we, um, probably have exhausted ourselves for the day today. Tomorrow, we really need to work on, um, if I can. Make my, uh, phone timer stop. The, uh, what we, what we need to be doing tomorrow is trying to concentrate on what our recommend issues and report are going to be looking like. We were also gonna have to, um, just sort of see where we are in the process moving forward. But we're gonna, um, and I will continue to, um, consult with, uh, others, yeah, in particular, uh, the president and the town manager and report back on tomorrow. But tomorrow's meeting will really be to take all of the information we've received and try and move it along to the next stage. Are there comments or questions now from the committee itself regarding, uh, the process that we have going forward? And, um, any recommendations from other members of the council? Dorothy?
I just want to be clear. The, I am not able to attend the meeting tomorrow, which is Wednesday. But we have a meeting on Thursday, do we not, at 1:30?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not gonna make a recommendation until, till Thursday. Is that right?
I think we will probably take the votes on Thursday and see if we can then conclude. But, um, I can't be certain. We're trying, um, I know that things, uh, got pressured because of the complexity of the budget this year. I feel really, um, badly that that has, uh, happened and that you ended up having, um, some people had to schedule various things that, uh, limited their ability to be present for some of the final meetings. I think that this has been, um, as said before, an extraordinary and unprecedented year. We're doing the best we can. I don't think we'll be doing votes tomorrow, but I can't assure you.
Because I, you know, I had down all the meetings listed. And to get here today, we drove four hours. You know, we just drove to Connecticut, did our doctor's appointment, drove back, got here. You know, it's been hard. And I don't want to miss it, but, you know, I could not change tomorrow's event. So I, I cannot make it.
I feel badly about that. Um, we, we do have a requirement that we have to act on the budget by the end of the month. We want to make sure that there's plenty of time for the council to be able to discuss the budget. Um, and, uh, so that we don't want to get the, um, even though technically we were given 30 days to provide a budget once it was referred to us, uh, because it was referred to us on the 29th of June. If we took to the fill 30 days, we would be at the very end of the month and then we would be depriving the council as a whole of having time to discuss the budget. Given the complexity of this year's budget, we didn't, um, I was trying to avoid doing that, which is why I ended up trying to accelerate the process. And, uh, it, it has created a dilemma, but, and I apologize for that.
And I, and I moved my Thursday, I mean, I'd finally made doctor's appointments to 8:15 so I can make it for your 1:30 meeting, doing the best I can.
I know, I appreciate it. Um, I'm hoping that we do not take any votes tomorrow. I just don't want to assure it because I can't stop people from making motions. I will, uh, follow up as best I can with, with emails to follow the meeting. I don't know if anybody else has anything that they want to, oh, I see several answers. Um, so I should get back to them. Lynn, did you have more?
Only that our meeting on Wednesday is at 1:30 and our meeting on Thursday is at 2:30.
Lynn, are you sure? Because I had it, I had it reversed. That was my question, the exact, the time for tomorrow.
I just checked the posting, but Athena is our best resource here.
Because the Andy email had the July 15th at 2:30 and July 16th at 1:30. I just, I'm fine with either. I just want to make sure I get it right.
It's been posted, that's why I changed the doctor's appointment, the dentist's appointment on Thursday. Seriously, so.
All I can say is Athena, could you check the posting?
I'll check.
Okay, Kathy, was that your comment?
The, the question was that, and Andy, the other thing is we're trying to put a report together and various people have sent you drafts.
Um, I know.
No, I said, no, my, my question is, are you gonna try to put them all into one document or share pieces? Or are we gonna focus just on high-level recommendations? Um, and then pull the report together? Because I think high-level recommendations might be a good place to focus rather than, uh, eight people trying to write a report together. Um, so that was just a thought on, the pieces can come together with edits to make it flow with all these different people's writing styles. So I think you have, you have about four sections now. And I know Lynn's couldn't be written till after today, so.
Yeah, and there's still such missing because, uh, section I was assigned to write hasn't been written, I admit.
Yeah, just a question purely on, yes, well, I think I stated it that there's one set of high-level decisions on recommendations. Then there's another set on what this report looks like. And since I tend to be a, read the first page of a long report and prefer to have the recommendations on that page, you know, then, then I read, I read the rest of it too. But I like, I like the bottom line at top, um, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's sort of an interesting question because the, ultimately, the question is, are we going to recommend the budget that was proposed by the town manager? And what is it that, um, you know, in the end, the high-level recommendation, if that's, uh, basically what the recommendation is?
That's my question. Yep.
But we need, you know, it's, it's not complex question, um, in what, how to frame it. It's how they answer it's maybe complex, but, uh.
No, I, I do understand that. Um, and I think everyone on the committee knows, I mean, the charter language doesn't allow us to move money around. So we can cut, but we can't, and we could write, you know, but we can't say, spend more here, spend less there. And neither can the council. I mean, it's that we, we can send the budget back. Um, so it's just, we're in that framework. Um, yeah, that, so that was my question. You are right that we can either say we love it and say a bit more about all the pieces of it, or we can say something more.
And the question is, are we saying more about a specific sections? And I think that's what we'll start to try and frame tomorrow. But not necessarily vote tomorrow, but we do have to start that question as to whether there's any sections of the budget in, um, I think we all know that there's one that's been put on the table for us, whether there are others. So give some thought to that question. Bob?
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, in addition to the, the obvious recommendation, you know, for the budget to accept it or recommend it or not, I think we might want to also include some assessment of risks and areas where we need to monitor going forward because circumstances could change.
Risks because of revenue, risks because of cost, or if you haven't defined yet?
Well, risks because of uncertainty about both revenue and cost, right? I mean, we don't, there are a lot of risks because of COVID and the economy and, and everything. And so I think we just need, I, I'm just throwing that out as a, as a way to focus the report, not only on do we make a recommendation, but also on where do we see areas that need to be monitored?
Okay. Should go back and look at our revised guidelines document. We talked about that a little bit in that. And, uh, that'd probably be useful thing to do. Dorothy, did you have additional comment?
Um, I, I guess I'm feeling it again, something that we went through before. We get a budget, we go through it, we look at it. And then we report on it and make a few comments. But then we're told and I'm reminded, yes, of course, we can, and this is what's true for town meeting. We can lower something, but we can't increase it. We can't move it to another place. And part of me says, well, then really, what are we doing? You know, I mean, I'm just expressing a little frustration because, you know, accountants can come and check out your budget and they have. So we're looking at things, not do the numbers add up? Although we, you know, Kathy is trying to make sure that the numbers are in the right places and we know why they're there. But we're kind of assuming and trusting that the numbers do add up. So we're here saying, is this the document that we want to run our town on? But yet, we're told we can't increase something, we can only take money away. So I, I'm feeling very hands tied. So I, I'm feeling very hands tied and I'm sure you know what I mean, Andy. You've been working on this kind of thing for years, but tell me why this is good, okay? I, I need to be given some reasons to think why this is a good way to go.
I hate to be, I'm, I'm not trying to be sarcastic in my answer, though it'll sound like it. State law sets up the process and the charter was adopted to accommodate what the state law provides. And this, so we are following what the statute, Mass. General Law indicates is a permissible process for us to adopt the budget. And, you know, the, the charter tracks the, the statute, but we are where we are. And what I've tried to do as chair of the committee is to look to the guidelines document is our opportunity where we can say to the manager at the beginning, this is what we would like you to consider. And I've hoped that we would engender a healthy discussion, both in the finance committee and in the council, about what goes in the guidelines document because that's what the manager has to work with as far as his guidance of where the council is when he develops the budget. But process is what it is.
So just a quick follow-up. So just to be sure, state law then forbids us to do what the, the strongest recommendation from some of the speakers was, to defund the police department.
Luckily, that's not true because.
We can cut.
Oh, you think you can cut it, but you can't put it anywhere else. In other words, the whole premise was, take it from there and not just give it away, but it was supposed to go and be used in more socially constructive ways. So you're actually not allowed to do that.
You can make recommendations to the town manager about where you would like money to go and that is his decision to, to follow through with that or to just eliminate whatever the figure is that we're reducing something by.
So that could be done within the same budget. It would still be called a budget FY21? Because I was.
My expert on the subject of the charter, who's our one council member who is also on the Charter Commission. But I think that there's process within the charter section on finance to ask that a supplemental budget be considered too. And so there are options out there. I think that in the end, the council has the key question as to whether it wants, you know, what it wants to do with the recommendations that we have received from a number of members of the public. And we don't know what other members of the public we might be hearing from yet.
I would appreciate it if people would hold their questions until tomorrow so that we can adjourn. I've been sitting here for four hours and I'm really tired and uncomfortable.
I was gonna suggest the same thing, yep.
And with that note, is there?
Let me clarify, the way the meetings are posted is 1:30 tomorrow, 2:30 on Thursday.
I'll switch. Thank you.
I'm sorry, there was that confusion, but I.
What I was doing was prior conversation. Mary Lou, did you have anything before we adjourn? Mary Lou? I don't hear from Mary Lou, then I'm gonna call us adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, so since she hasn't unmuted to, unless she needs help unmute, then I will consider us adjourned at 5:30 or 10:00 PM. And I appreciate it. It has been a long meeting. Thanks.
Thanks, Andy.